Welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. The first thing on our agenda is a presentation by Scott Smith. Welcome. And he's gonna talk about options available after Con Edson's gas moratorium. Westchester Clean Energy Action Plan.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for inviting me. So I'm Scott Smith. I'm on the clean heating and cooling team. My boss, Adam and Gordon, is in town, but unfortunately he got dragged away on something else and isn't able to make it. He says he's...
Hi, I'm sorry. I can't hear anything because I want to come over here.
I'm baking cookies!
Yeah.
I'm promoting Girl Scout cookies!
Yes, whoever brought those Girl Scout cookies in must have wanted...
They're all gone already too.
I think that person's a bling.
So yeah, I'm here to talk about alternatives to natural gas heating. And a Clean Energy Action Plan. I guess I'll use that as context to the conversation. I'm curious, so first of all, how long would you like me to present for? How long do we want to leave for questions? I can do this as quickly or...
How much time did we lock?
I think we did.
Like fifteen, twenty minutes or all total, so.
All total?
All total, okay. So I'll go pretty quickly. Maybe I'll try to leave at least five or ten minutes for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I also have a lot more slides than that. And I think you guys, these will be circulated. You'll have access to them.
Absolutely. We're gonna post them on the website along, you know, with the tape, so everyone will be able to review them. We also circulated them to our boards.
Okay.
Zoning Board, Planning Board, Architectural Review Board, just...
Great. And I'm available taking all of you if you have questions about anything related to that presentation.
Are we taking?
Yeah, turn it on.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's on. So, in response to Con Edson's announcement about the gas moratorium, the day before the deadline for application submission on March 14th, we announced the Clean Energy Action Plan. At a really high level, it's a $250 million incremental investment that the state is making in gas-constrained areas, predominantly right now Westchester. It also includes the town of Lansing and Tompkins County. One of the main goals is we want to make sure economic development doesn't suffer as a result of the moratorium. So we're putting some additional money on the table. We're also making sure people understand what the alternatives are. This is how some of the money breaks out, and I'm not gonna talk much about this slide because I'm gonna go into details later. Basically, you know, when it comes to the alternatives to heating and cooling with nat-- heating with natural gas, heat pumps are the main technically viable solution. And there's basically two types. Ground source heat pumps and air source heat pumps. Basically, what heat pumps do is they concentrate energy and move it around, right? So in the case of ground source heat pumps, you're concentrating energy that's in the ground and you're moving it into a building. Or during the summer, you're taking, you're concentrating heat from the building and moving it into the ground. Same with an air source heat pump, except it's with air. I'm gonna run through a lot of this stuff really quickly, but there's some, you know, some pictures in here of distribution systems. I think, you know, the basic message here is that they don't look a lot different than traditional heating and cooling systems, and they can pretty easily interface with your home. There are different types of heat exchangers that you can use for ground source heat pumps and different types of air source heat pumps. In terms of ground source heat pumps, you know, like I mentioned, it's, you use the, the earth as the heat sink. It's fairly top common, constant temperature underground, somewhere around 50 degrees, depending on where you are in the state. Heat pumps take that constant temperature and again, move heat in or into or out of the house depending on whether you need to heat or cool. Generally, this involves installing some sort of ground heat exchanger. Most of them are closed loop vertical wells, or at least that's what we recommend. You can do it in commercial buildings. You can do it on campuses. We haven't done a district geothermal system in New York, but we're actively in discussion on a few. And I think Westchester, especially in the context of the moratorium, would be a fantastic place to do one or more district geothermal systems. There's a video in here that you can watch later. It's sort of instructional. In terms of the Clean Energy Action Plan, we had some incentives available and we increased them by 25%. So for commercial buildings, now you get $1,500 per cooling ton instead of $1,200. And we used to have a $500,000 cap per building. Now it's $5 million. That's the major change here. I mean, the 25% is good, but the $5 million cap is really important. We're actively in discussions with a lot of developers in southern Westchester, and we need, we wanna get to know developers in other areas of the county so that we can help them understand how this works better. You know, one of the multifamily buildings that's being built in New Rochelle is gonna be eligible for $1.8 million of our incentive, and then we've also been able to hook them up with somebody who can put the wells in for essentially on their own cost, and they charge back a usage fee, just like the utility would for natural gas to the customer. And that seems to be a pretty compelling opportunity. Again, incentives went up by 25% for homes. We're doing free screenings for all buildings, free electrification screenings for all buildings above 25,000 square feet in Westchester County. And this isn't news, but we have loan options available for heat pumps. So that was ground source heat pumps. We also have incentives for air source heat pumps. There are a number of different kinds. Big buildings use variable refrigerant flow systems. On the outside, they look a lot like, you know, rooftop units. On the inside, they look similar to what you see for distribution systems within a commercial building. The cool thing about variable refrigerant flow is that they can share, you can do heat exchange between spaces. So if you're heating one space and cooling in another space, you can net those out and reduce your energy costs. So there's a video in here that you can look at. These are the primary types of residential air source heat pumps. Duckless mini splits and central ducted air source heat pumps. And in terms of the Clean Energy Action Plan, we announced a new incentive for whole house air source heat pumps. That's $1,000 per thermal ton compared to like the 1875 for ground source. Well, you know, as I mentioned, we're gonna do the screenings for, electrification screenings for large buildings and we have financing available for residential customers. We also have a community campaign here in Westchester County run by Sustainable Westchester. Right now, they're active in Bedford, Lewisboro, and Pound Ridge based on an RFI that they issued. And we're gonna, we added some money to move them into southern Westchester. And to have us, to have them help us with commercial buildings too. Tomorrow, there's a sustainable energy conference and trade show in Tarrytown that I've been organizing. And the whole goal there is to bring the people who know how to do this stuff well together with the people who need solutions. So introduce developers and architects and engineers to keep up developers. If you're not doing anything, we'd love to have you. Come on over. So now I'm gonna briefly run through some of the other funding that we announced as part of the Clean Energy Action Plan. Then I'll take questions. Gonna have to go through this pretty quick, but obviously, you know, as a follow-up to as many, ask many questions that you have. We have a first come, first served program for commercial new construction, and we increased the incentives for all electric projects and projects in gas-constrained areas. We have a first come, first served program for multifamily buildings, and similarly, we increased the incentives and the caps for that project or for that program. And then, we're making a bunch of competitive awards available for new construction. There's a net zero for economic development program which is gonna roll out $15 million this year, next year, and the year after for net zero buildings. There's our Buildings of Excellence Competition, which is $10 million this year, next year, and the year after. And in most of these cases, you're gonna get extra points in the competition if you're located within a gas-constrained area like Westchester. We also have a bunch of programs for existing buildings. We have a study program called Flex Tech. We have a real-time energy management program which is about instrumenting buildings and helping people manage them more effectively through data analysis and control. I mentioned the free screenings. We also have a bunch of competitive awards that we're announcing for large buildings. There's a carbon challenge, $15 million a year for the next three years. Energy Delete, which is specifically for colleges and universities, that's gonna be $5 million. And then, an exciting thing that we're gonna launch later this year is a Westchester and Lansing Carbon Challenge. So $15 million of funding specifically dedicated to Westchester County and Lansing, New York for carbon, carbon reduction projects. Awards of up to $5 million per project. And if you wanna learn more on our website, this is the URL. So that was extremely quick and hopefully I won't have questions. So...
You mentioned a few things, screening for certain buildings that's free, you said over a certain size, is that right?
Yeah, over 25,000 square feet.
So then what is the cost for under 25,000 or residential?
So for residential, so for residential, there is a free energy audit or an income-adjusted energy audit. You pay more, you know, more for it, the more money you make. For some, excuse me, for some residents, it's free. I think the maximum cost is like $500. And then, you know, for... Basically, for those smaller buildings, smaller commercial buildings, you know, we will, we have a small commercial energy audit program that could maybe do an audit. This free electrification screening is meant to just give large buildings an idea of what their options might be for electrification. The next step would then be to do like the caution and engineering feasibility study, you know, where we would pay half and they would pay half. You know, that would likely cost, you know, in the tens of thousands of dollars to get to the point where we know exactly what the recommendation is, how much it'll cost and what the...
So if a homeowner wants to increase their square footage and therefore their uses of gas, which they can't, and they have to change over, consider changing over, those incentives you mentioned, is there a threshold for them in terms of their, you know, if you make over a certain amount of money, your income is too high, or is anyone available?
Anyway, everybody's eligible for the incentives, yeah, that I mentioned, yeah. And so in the case of somebody adding onto their house, you know, tip, I think the most common solution would be they add onto their house and then they install an air source heat pump, a duckless mini split air source heat pump, which that would just serve the addition. One, depending on the addition is, it might be more than one, but, you know, if their existing heating system is new and relatively efficient, then that would be the likely way to go. If they have an old system or an oil fire system or a really low efficiency system, then we generally recommend that they look at, you know, a full house replacement, maybe with ground source heat pumps. Depending on whether they have ductwork and some other issues.
So the only aspect then of the incentives that you discussed that is, has an income eligibility threshold then is the loan options that you reviewed?
So two things that are, one is the audit. And it's not an eligibility criteria, it's just a cost. Scaling cost. It's free below a certain income level and then it costs money above
I see.
the income level. And then, the financing is available to everybody, but the rate is different depending on what your income is. If you qualify as LMI, which is 80% of, 80% are below area median income, you get a subsidized interest rate of about 4%. Everybody else gets a, like a market rate interest rate of, I think it's seven and a half percent. Maybe through my slides.
Yeah, it's not, it's not some incentive.
No, no. So, but it's, it's, it's an unsecured 15-year loan. You can't get it from a bank. So yes, the interest, the interest rate is...
This is for people who can't get loans, I guess.
No, not necessarily. It's people who don't, who don't wanna secure a loan or who wanna take out a loan. It's for, so people who wanna use their, who have available equity in their house should go that route. That is the cheapest financing.
For their home equity, a lot of credit.
Yeah, for home equity, a lot of credit. But if you don't, or if you don't have or wanna use your home equity, I actually did this myself. I did not, I did not wanna secure the loan with anything. I didn't have home equity at the time. And it's a long-term, it's a long-term loan. Yeah, the interest rate is sort of, you know, at a market rate, but it's not something you have to collateralize. I don't think I have the interest rates in here, unfortunately.
And just to add to that, so geothermal, those heat sources, that's a, like $40,000 to $50,000, I think, to put in just on a residential house. Yeah, or more.
Depends on...
So you're only offering like $7,500, it says, right?
It depends on the size. So this is, this is a, an average single-family home. On top of our incentive, there's actually a 30% federal tax credit that also reduces the amount. You know, you can get, so if you have, if you have a house that is, that is the perfect fit for ground source heat pumps, you can get after, after incentives and tax credits, you can get one for the ballpark of about $20,000. For, you know, for an average...
What is, what is that, an average home size-wise?
I think you're, we're talking about three to four tons is what we have.
Which is...
Sorry, which is, sorry, 1,500 to 2,000 square feet probably, depending on the condition of the, of the envelope. So it's more, so it is more expensive. It's a lot more efficient though. You know, against gas, it's a pretty long payback, but if you can't get gas anymore and oil is your alternative, then it's, you know, typically like a five to seven-year payback if you think in those terms. But you eliminate, you would be eliminating fossil fuel combustion at your home, or well, at least for your heating system. These things can also supply hot water, so if you take that route, you could eliminate combustion. So not, no onsite combustion, no emissions, and they last a really long time. So ground source heat pump systems last, the loop itself, the heat exchanger can last 50 years or more. The heat pumps are rated at 25 years, you know, whereas your furnace or boiler is probably 15.
Is every area suitable for putting a ground source heat pump?
It can be done, it can be done pretty much everywhere. You know, we're doing so, in New Rochelle, at some of the large multifamily buildings we're looking at, that we're gonna put the loop field, the heat exchanger is gonna go under the building within, they're really tight lot lines, so they're, they're gonna be put in as, before the foundation is poured is, if we can, if the project moves forward, that'll be how they're done. You know, if there are horizontal loop fields that require quite a bit of space in your yard, so you, that, you know, it'd be like, you know, half your backyard would, you know, would be the loop field. Those are relatively inexpensive. You can drill a vertical hole in most places. It actually doesn't take that much space. In fact, and I can't remember the name of the town.
So within the, within the four corners of the structure, as in your basement and down, or outside the structure?
Normally, they're outside, but you can do, it's rare, it's rare to see and it's hard to do in an existing basement. So...
So that person would have to go to either electric or, or oil?
No, that's on the field, you said.
Well, I'm not sure. Sorry, I think I'm losing track of the question.
So the situation where you don't have the ability, you're, let's say you're between two buildings. So you can't have access to...
We're talking downtown development?
Yeah, downtown development situation.
Yeah, so in that case, it may be that air source heat pumps are the better fit for that home. Although, I've seen, so...
Home or business.
Home or business, yeah. So in one, in one town, and I apologize, I can't remember which town it is, and I should know. But there's a town in the Hudson Valley that's actually doing heat exchangers in the rights of way, like in the sidewalk, right? So that, that, that's, that can be an option in those tight urban areas to do them there.
Nobody's touching your son.
There's a ground source heat pump. There's a ground source heat pump system at St. Patrick's Cathedral. I mean, so if you can, if you can do it in that kind of dense urban environment, you can pretty much do it anywhere. It's a matter of course.
Is it a high water table or bedrock? Is that a barrier to the...
No, bedrock is perfect, actually. That's the simplest. So the hardest thing to deal with is a lot of overburden, so a lot of sand on top of the rock. The, sort of the cheapest, most effective drilling. Aside from if you had all sand, you know, but if you have a mix of sand and bedrock would be, you know, the same kind of rock all the way down and very, very little bit of soil on top, at lowest cost.
Do you have brochures at the building part we can give to residents who come in or to developers who come in?
Yes, we have a few. Yeah, there's a, there's a Clean Energy Action Plan flat fact sheet that we can hand out.
Maybe you could just...
We could even tailor...
...email it to me and I can take and print it out here for, for people, just so that they've got the abbreviated version and, you know, you put on it a, a link to this full presentation for people.
Yeah, so, so a version of this slide deck without the technical content, like the, you know, the diagrams and stuff that I showed, is at this site right here, as well as that fact sheet that you were asking for. I'm happy to email it to you, but if you want it sooner, you can go grab it from here.
I actually think if you have really committed providers of these services and that's who your conference attendees are gonna be, that list should be included of like, you know, nicer approved contractors.
Yeah, so that list is broader than the ones that are gonna be at the conference tomorrow, but it's right up on our website, so if you go...
Well, that, maybe that should be included because I think, you know, to a certain extent, getting a couple people coming in and bid it out is what's gonna make the...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What about if you go over a septic field for the... There are a lot of houses around here on septic fields.
So I believe, I believe so, but I think, well, there's a setback requirement, I think, for septic. So if you, you know, you'd have to locate the wells probably a certain, a certain space away from the septic system. I'm pretty sure from the, from the Department of Health requirements, there's like a setback requirement, I think it's 15 feet, but don't quote me.
And Scott, do you have any solutions to the natural gas moratorium for commercial applications? For example, restaurants that can't get natural gas from their cooking? What solutions do they have?
Restaurant, restaurant cooking is tough. And I think propane is gonna end up getting used a lot. There are some electric options for cooking that, I'm not the technical expert in. When it comes to heating and cooling restaurants though, you've probably seen them, or if you start to know what they look like, you'll see them all over the place. There's a lot of restaurants in Westchester and elsewhere that use air source heat pumps for heating and cooling. Some of them put them in for cooling and then, you know, realize, oh, well, they can heat with these two, so they heat them.
Seems a lot of your incentives, if not all of them, relate to private businesses. Is there anything, any incentive for municipalities that ultimately wanna change?
Yeah, so all, technically, all of the programs that I mentioned are municipal buildings are eligible for as long as they pay the system benefits charge. And that is tricky in Westchester County. Most of you, most of the town buildings, probably in Newcastle for example, are NEPA custo-- NEPA, buy their electricity from NEPA and don't pay the system benefits charge. But NEPA has, as part of the Clean Energy Action Plan, it's just one line on the bottom of this first slide, but NEPA has, has committed to providing additional resources for its customers in Westchester. They work a little differently than we do. They don't actually provide, they don't pay an incentive, but they finance at a really low cost. It's a little bit less than a percent. And they'll do a turnkey project, you know, design, engineer, and build it for any public building in Westchester or even other parts of the state too. Obviously, I don't have anybody with NEPA with me here today, but if you guys are interested in doing work in town and you wanna talk to them.
I'm just curious. I don't think anyone's looking at it today, but it's interesting.
That would be...
Issue to address.
Yeah, that would be the way. I mean, there are things that we can do to help too. Like that screening is gonna be, I think is gonna be available to municipal buildings. But when it comes to actually doing projects at public buildings in Westchester, that would be NEPA's role.
Scott, going back to the incentive for homeowners and just residential homes, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the range. So the range that you provided in that slide, that's like an average home. So let's say, for example, a contractor bid out the work for a home that's like twice the size and, you know, for example, it's whatever, $50,000, and then another contractor bidded out for $40,000. Is there like a cap on the incentive, I guess is my question? Like, how does that work exactly?
No, it's strictly based on the size of the system. So it's sort of irrespective of what it costs. It's not like 20% of the cost for 30%. It ends up being 20% of the cost for most projects. And again, don't forget, there's, for ground source heat pumps, there's, all of that I just said is for ground source heat pumps. And there's a 30% federal tax credit on top of our incentive. For air source, the percentage is about the same, but instead, instead of those other numbers we're talking about, it's more like 3,000 to 4,000 for a typical 1,500 to 2,000 square foot house, or again, 6 to 8 if it's twice that big. And it doesn't matter how big the house is, our incentive is $1,000 per ton.
Hi Scott, Jim Smith. Just to know, there's an exciting project actually going on in our town through our schools that we've been working with NEPA. And they're sort of in the advanced stages of a geothermal project at our, at Seven Bridges Middle School.
Oh, awesome. I didn't know that.
It's, yeah, it's, and you know, they use 40,000 gallons of oil a year. And it's, so it's a pretty exciting project that they've been, they've been working with NEPA, so I just wanted to know that.
Great. Do you have a sense for when it's gonna get constructed?
I don't. They, they had gotten several grants for the planning phases of it, and they studied each of the school buildings. And then, the second phase was focused on the one that would work the best, and that was Seven Bridges. And, you know, I think they have a company that was gonna probably finance and do the payback like you mentioned before. But it's a, I think for a commercial application, it's really exciting because that's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is a lot of work.
So that's a, you know, for, maybe that's something the town, the town buildings are, can also open up to.
Yeah, we'd love to do, well, we can talk to NEPA about that. It'd be great to do a case study on it and be able to bring people around. It's important to show people this stuff is working.
Yeah, yeah, and they're gonna do it, they're gonna use a sports field there as the sort of main, you know, point to put it, which is, you know, they'll do it, install it over summer, put the field back. So it sounds, sounds pretty exciting.
The RIT is that that's newest school.
It's interesting that it didn't work with the older ones.
It didn't work because of the piping and the whole, that's, school was built with the type of heat system, I guess it has. It was an easy retrofit, as far as the school piping goes versus the, you know, the school, I'm sure it was a lot more complicated. And I think the, I think the high school's probably on, they might be on gas, I don't know.
They are in gas.
So, so maybe that took away the benefits.
I think they were also, that was, that's the least efficient energy school though, I think I heard that too, Seven Bridges.
Maybe for the oil, they got the oil.
Yeah, exactly.
I said one other question we talked about in the hallway. I think everyone will benefit from it. Is the, the other thing NEPA has been doing around the stretch energy codes? Because I think that's something the town board has also talked about and I think is, is pretty exciting.
Yeah, I think, so we see it as particularly important for gas-constrained areas where there're gonna be more, more economic... So it depends on the lens that you go through, right? But from, obviously, our lens, one of our major lenses is, you know, the state's, you know, helping to meet the state's carbon goals. That's what we're sort of charged with. And if you think about gas-constrained areas, so, so yes, it's an opportunity for, you know, heat pumps and electrification. It's also, it's also possible that a lot of buildings will go to oil, which, you know, previously would have maybe gone to natural gas. And so building codes are an important part of that. Plus, we just need to make the building stock more efficient overall. As you mentioned, Jim, we have a stretch code that we recently published that we're encouraging municipalities to adopt. If you're super focused on electrification and fossil fuel elimination, there's an Ithaca Green Building Code that is even more stringent than the one, than the stretch code that I recommend you look at.
Yeah, I think we, somebody mentioned, we look like the Ithaca one. We are looking into it. I think Bill Spade is putting together some stuff. The local architect who's done a couple of green buildings in town.
Great.
He's gonna make some suggestions.
He's a big proponent of this, I think it'd be successful.
Well, if there, if there are things that we can do to help, you know, this home.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thanks a lot for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. So should I, thanks. Should I, should I stand? Should I head out?
It's up to you.
If I was you, I would head out personally.
Alright, then you stay.
Thanks a lot, man. I really appreciate it. In fact, when you stayed, we started to wonder what's...
Yeah, exactly. You can stay instead of me.
Okay, we're gonna start the Holocaust memorial discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, on to the next item. So the next item on the agenda is propose Holocaust memorial discussion. And is Ally here? I see Stacy.
She's gonna be here. One second. She's just...
Welcome. So, and I see Grace is here. So Grace, this idea was actually developed when I was speaking with Ally on a Saturday morning, and we were talking about a Holocaust event that she's planning in town, and she's asked me ways to promote it and whatnot. And then we started talking about the organization that honored your father. And that organization tries to preserve stories from Holocaust survivors because unfortunately, they're passing on. And I texted you early in the morning, and I said, Grace, what's the name of that organization that honored your father? And your response unfortunately was, I don't know if you heard, my father passed away last night. I knew he was sick, so, you know, my condolences. Again, but, but that's how this idea actually came to be.
I'm stunned because I, I just thought you wanted me to come here and just cover it like...
Cover the... I didn't tell you that story yet?
No.
Oh, I didn't?
This hearing was...
I thought I did. But that, that is, then our conversation started, it segued into the fact that, you know, another Holocaust survivor just passed away and we need to preserve the stories and and maybe a Holocaust memorial would be a nice idea. And that's actually how it, it came to fruition. And... So basically, you know, and it's on the agenda, and, and that's it. And I had suggested some ideas. I know Stacy and Ally, Stacy's here, and, and...
My granddaughter of two Holocaust survivors is here.
And Grace's father was a Holocaust survivor. And... And so basically, I had thought about some suggestions, so I'll just throw them out there. But, you know, something simple like, just like a rock, you know, like a nice rock with like an engraved plate on it. I've seen some of those, and, you know, we're not talking about anything elaborate, but just something where, some, a location where, you know, you could just have a memorial there, and
Ally and I went through town today to look at some of the locations that you proposed. And the one that we thought might be the nicest was at the gazebo, you know, you have two benches already. And there looks like there's room to the far left, she took pictures, so when she gets here, she can show you. But, that you could maybe plant a tree, because tree is like light.
Right.
And so we thought maybe put a plaque, it's like in the far left, a bit almost closer to where the fence is. And then the idea was, there's also this project that we're thinking of starting with the high school, with a group that they're starting now that's related to Holocaust awareness and Holocaust antidote awareness. And there's this daffodil project. And so we thought the idea would be, you know, every year, once a year, this club and, you know, the community could plant daffodils around the gazebo.
Nice.
And then we thought it'd be nice because every year they could have a little commemoration at the gazebo, and it's a nice place to kind of gather the community. Well, there's Ally.
Where's Ally?
I was just telling them where we
Everybody was waiting for it.
So, I was telling them about the gazebo, I give the daffodils around it, and maybe a tree to that left hand side, we took the picture.
And I told the story how the idea came to fruition in our meeting, at Lang's, texting Grace, and hearing about her father. So, and that's it, now we're just talking about some possible ideas.
It might be nice to put a little plaque in memory of Grace's father, you know, at the memorial.
You're all gonna make me cry.
Sorry.
I think, I think that'd be very nice, but, you know.
Just poppy would be funny.
Right, right, we could plant poppies. That's it. But, we didn't really talk about it as a town board yet, you know, I, I did raise a suggestion and I've been throwing out ideas for locations and you guys, when I'm walking around for locations, but we didn't really talk about it as a town board.
I think we're all open to it. Absolutely open to it, and
Full support.
The more, yeah, full support, but I, I think the more ideas you have and, and whether it's location or how you wanna think it should be construction and built, what it should present, what it should look like, we're open.
Yes, if you come up with ideas you wanna present us, we will, we'll look at it.
I don't, I don't think anything's a bad idea, I think certainly, maybe some that are better and just are more, you know, more conducive to what we wanna demonstrate. And, but I think you just mentioned with the, every year that their students are getting involved, that's certainly an added bonus. That piece is, that piece is, is exciting, right?
Yeah.
Exciting, may not be the right term, but
Right, no, so we're working on that right now in terms of creating the, like, some kind of club or some kind of organization at the high school level. So that's, that is being worked on, but, I'm sorry, I always think I jumped in late. But the daffodil idea is also, it's such a cool multi-generational project for the community that that truly can happen every year. And the, I was thinking about this, that, you know, you plant the bulbs in the fall, and then they're blooming right now. And this is when the Holocaust remembrance, everything's happening between this week, next week, and even one more week in May. And so it is so amazing that you could really reach out across the whole town. They can come and plant in the fall, and when, if there is some kind of remembrance ceremony annually at, at this memorial, they're watching daffodils bloom that everyone planted in the fall, now bloom this spring. So my only suggestion, I actually love that idea. I don't know if the area around the gazebo is big enough, because at some point it's gonna bleed into the field and you need to use the field, you don't want them trampling the daffodils. Right. So we might wanna, but I like it because it's visible. I mean, I don't know, I, I would think eventually, if you're gonna have people do this every year, you know, if you're driving up from the stone, and you see the Reeders, the hill where Reeders died just was, and it's all daffodils, like, that would be something eventually that would really, you know, be stunning. There is, it's funny, I don't know, I did take a picture of it, there is a blue metal stake in the ground, that's like probably my height. And we were like, oh, that's so interesting, that would be a great spot for a treat. I don't know what the symbolism of that blue stake is.
Where, where's this?
Oh, it's for Vayerschul.
Because there's like a fence that
Hope we didn't pull it out.
You didn't pull it out, did you?
No, no, we couldn't, we couldn't even get there, we were
But there's a good area before the last
That might be with the property line, it's more, yeah.
Yes, that might be the property line for the Shell station, okay, no, yeah, we know what that is.
What, what about that Millwood Garden? You know, if they're willing to work with it.
No.
Where, where?
Nobody's gonna see that.
It's a Millwood.
Yeah, that's the problem, isn't it?
That's the same street.
I like that idea, it's more
That's the problem, nobody remembers.
It's on, yeah, I like the idea of town, it's on Sand Street, it's Millwood Garden, it's off of, uh
It's not really there.
Maybe in Genie's?
You know where Sand Street is?
Maybe in Genie Park somewhere, you're the nine eleven memorial.
You know where Sand Street is?
You have a Genie.
It's, it's
Well, maybe it should be separate from that.
But you went into the whole field.
No.
Right, you could plant a whole field, one of the hills.
Yeah.
For the fields, you know, because we were there today, walking in it.
Walking in it.
And the, there's a fence that, so you actually wouldn't be able to like plant anything past that fence, so you would never impose on the field.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big space, actually.
No, but if you eventually want it to be bigger and grow each year is what I'm saying, you're, it's gonna constrain that some point.
There was a sizable
But there's a sizable amount of space.
And so we were actually really trying to have space, you know.
It is.
I would try.
It is a big space. We once had, after, after the Dallas, the police officers were killed in Dallas, we had a memorial there, there were tons of people there.
Yeah, we had that. Yeah.
All on this side of the fence, you know.
So we thought it would be nice area like
Yeah, and we did a vigil there after Phil Parkland, not a building, but a, a gathering, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's actually a big area, it is a big area.
It's a huge
And a little burned, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, remember the, uh, the torches?
A memorial there, it would be a nice
The lanterns, where it was parked all over the area.
Oh, that one wasn't a big one, that one wasn't a big one, thank God, because that could have turned that thing.
Could we, could we do something, could we do something out front here, even though, I mean, it's not all our property, right?
Yeah, it is, it's state property.
And it, and it would have to potentially have been ripped, because if, if you had a, for lack of a better term, a big boulder monument that, it may be easier to move, but if work needs to be done, you could potentially move something. And if you remade this area, it's right in front of Town Hall, the entrance to our community, you know, right out front.
That's nice, um, yeah, we have to just
Especially if you're planting flowers every year, and they burst up, and you come into Newcastle, you have a big, you know, spring exposure.
The nice thing about that, too, is that, the gazebo's already nice.
Right.
So we can make another area there.
And we'll also need to fix this.
Not that this is
Yes, yeah, yeah.
This isn't a, this is, it's prime to, it's work on it. But it's not our property, though, right?
Yeah, but you know, it's just that there's a lot of utilities that run underneath it, so we wouldn't be bothering any of that, and it's county right of way, but again, you know,
No one's gonna complain or pouting at the walls, and they always will see them first week of year anyway.
We can
But not, yeah.
Right, well, but it's more, also a monument sometime, they, they, but it was
Let them complain about a Holocaust memorial.
Exactly.
Right, it was really substantial in the middle there.
Right.
Eventually, once the town has more dollars, build around it and, you know.
Yeah, that's true.
Jettison site, actually.
So you're saying in front of Town Hall?
Yeah, this, this is hopefully not gonna be this important to me.
Yeah.
Right, but in front of the library, and Any luck it's not always gonna look like that?
People, wait, on this side of Town Hall?
Right here.
On this side, yeah. Right here, okay.
The construction
Okay.
Yeah, that's gonna go along with your
Oh, we've, okay.
My point is you'll get a lot of people going in and out, to the library and
Yeah, people seeing it, a lot of exposure.
Just work on it.
But anyway, yeah, whatever it is, we're just installed today.
Open to the
Yeah, we don't need, we do obviously don't need this side today, but
So, I think we're all in, in general support of this. Okay. So come up with some other thoughts and ideas, but I love those ideas. Some more ideas.
Yeah.
Fabulous. Thank you.
That's it, all right, thank you for coming. Grace, you may wanna stay also for the welcome, is the welcome, yeah, well, the welcome got really low on the agenda, but
I'll stay.
We can do it after the joint meeting with the Airport Advisory Board, there's a lot of people here for that.
Yeah, Airport Advisory Board.
All right, so, our next thing on our agenda is the joint meeting with the Airport Advisory Board Committee, they're here. We have a recap of the meeting with the county executives and the next steps for the Newcastle Airport, Airport Advisory Committee. So Rob, you wanna do the recap?
You wrote a nice one today, what did you, what do you, what do you read that?
Thank you. Want me to read it?
Oh, well, you know, it's a read verbatim.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know at heart, I mean, it's, you know. But I, I, I will actually, I will actually reference it for my notes, so hold on a second, I do have it right here.
And I'll just step in and interrupt and correct you, we never even, you don't have
That'd, that'd be perfect.
That'll be good.
So let's see, here, here's what I wrote today, okay? Here we go. We had a very productive, I'm gonna do word for word. We had a very productive, I will, I will mention the attendees. We had a very productive meeting with the county executive discuss Newcastle, Newcastle issues with the Westchester County Airport. Attendees included, and I added on the names. County Executive George Latimer, Ken Jenkins, Deputy County Executive Latimer, my dad, Joan McDonald, Director of Operations, Susan Spear, Intergovernment Affairs, John Nona, County Attorney, Vic Melison, Senior Assistant to the County Executive, and Aviva, Aviva Meyer, Assistant to the County Executive, public, for Public Health and Infrastructure. Also, Mike Kaplowich was there, Jeremy was there, Jill was there, and four members of the Newcastle Airport Advisory Board. Tara, Rob, Susan, and Warren.
And you were there.
And I was there. And the county executive has provided us, provided us with a copy of the letter that was sent to the FAA.
Ken Jenkins, did you mention, I'm sorry.
I did, it's your Ken Jenkins. And his letter recognized new provisions in the FAA Reauthorization Act of two thousand eighteen to address airport noise. And the county executive offered to share data from our noise monitors, noise complaints and flight tracking information. He also requests that in meeting to discuss ways we can work together to help alleviate local noise impacts and hear from impacted residents in a public meeting. May have to amend that a little bit. The county executive agreed to conduct this meeting in Newcastle, I offered Chaplain of the Performing Arts Center as a possible venue. Someone just mentioned your name. As far as engagement and funding of an independent consultant, the county executive agreed to look into securing services as part of the master plan RFP. But significantly, this will be done in advance of the final master plan RFP, and hopefully sooner rather than later so we could have the benefit of the analysis to formulate and advocate effectively for Newcastle and neighboring towns. There was agreement about increasing the landing fees at Westchester Airport, and we talked about improving the flow of data, especially with the Westchester Airport Advisory Board. Thank you to everyone who scrambled to put together the agenda on such short notice, especially Rob Pleischer, and those who attended the meeting on behalf of Newcastle. The end.
So to revisit some of those issues that came up, that I think are especially important for us to focus on. One was the issue of timelines. And it wasn't the date, the period of time that I had written down for when they were gonna get back to us about whether or not we kinda go forward with kind of a standalone, something for Newcastle, or something that's kind of more integrated with what the county's doing. I had written down one month, I'm not sure where everybody else had written, is that, is that what you had? Yeah, within the month that I thought is what they, like, you said, but I, I think you meant
A month.
A month.
They're not, not, not written in the paper.
Yeah. Right, yeah, and I think it
Sorry, I didn't understand that, within the month, what is going to happen?
So within a month
Within a month, not this, this month.
Right, within one month, from the, from the date of the, of the period, of, of, of meeting. The idea was that the county, I thought, would make a decision about whether or not they would, could move aggressively to have this analysis done, kind of separately from the RFP process, which the county executive said could take, you know, a very long time, even up to a couple of years. And he understands that that's not really acceptable for anybody, for this aspect of, of the, of the issue that we're all trying to address. I, I didn't think it was the analysis, I thought it was a determination as to whether or not we would get our own expert or the expert would be, um, uh
Did we put that on the table, getting on it?
Multi-wire, I suppose. No, no, whether or not
Sorry, if we get our expert, Jill, I thought when we, you and I discussed this yesterday, I thought what, what you were describing was that within a month's time, the county would make a decision
Yes, that, that's
How much mechanism by which they would bring an expert in, not a power of
Correct.
Yes, yes, not, but, but not an analysis.
Correct.
You, you're right, that, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
You're, you're right, Jill, Jill was more precise.
Yeah, so the decision as to, to how we were getting our own expert would be decided within the, the thirty day period of time.
Right.
Whether it be, you know, something, an accelerated portion of the master plan, or something separate apart.
Or separate.
They were talking about, uh, obtaining experts through their noise monitoring system. So, because they were gonna take and try to secure an expert that way, whether or not we'd be able to piggyback onto that and grab one of those for Newcastle. So I think it's really important that we stay on top of the county and make sure that a month from now, that that decision has been made, and we've got a very clear path forward.
I think in advance, a month from now, a reminder, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, two weeks in, yeah, yeah, where are we going? Well, I'm not saying, you know, our interim steps, but, but as a very hard marker, we don't wanna let that month slip.
Right.
Right. Okay.
We're not going to.
Well, actually, you know, I mean, I, I think that brings us a really good point, which is, but maybe the next step ought to be to provide them back with a memory and our understanding of what the next step will offer and how to achieve.
That's a reason.
Not a bad idea.
That's a very good idea.
So, so, that's why I'm trying to go through all these, to raise these issues, to make sure that we're on the same page.
Right, and also, we'd not on summary, but like to request, like with Susan's email today, to request that we set up a meeting with our federal officials. They, they talked about a meeting with Needalowey's office, and, you know, let's get that scheduled. And let's also make sure there's some follow-up to the letter from, that they sent to the FAA. We should ask if there's been a response.
So, 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 so that was the first issue that I wanted to make sure that we were all together on, that, you know, what was that month? There are other interim steps we can talk about, that happened before then, but that, that, that one month, that does not slip. Um, the next thing that I kinda had on, on my list was, uh, he didn't, I guess we're waiting on them in terms of timeline for when the FAA might come up here. He says he reached out to them in terms of, I know the Airport Advisory Board, he said that he gave him the dates of the Airport Advisory Board meetings, who's waiting to get back from them. But for us, I wasn't sure exactly when, if there was a specific date when he
I don't, I don't think he gave us a date.
Maybe that was kind of opening
Right, he didn't give us a date.
Yeah. Right. So we should try, you know, I, I think he had, his thought in his mind was to kind of combine that meeting with his coming back here as well for kind of a, a second kind of open house, so to speak, coffee and conversation.
With, with the representative from the FAA.
Right, so I think those two are kind of tied together. So because I think it's important to get him back up here to here, residency, you know, I think we wanna make sure that the FAA doesn't hold that up too much, and if it does, maybe he should come up here, we should separately, because obviously none of us can control what the FAA's, you know, does and doesn't do in terms of their timeline.
But I think, I'd just add, I mean, I, I think, I think he knows the problem. You know, and, and, and hearing it again and again, this, at this point, I think we all agree, we need actual items. We don't just need to talk about the problem and complain about it. He knows there's a problem. At this point, it should be, you know, what are the, what's getting done in response, period. You know, we don't, I, I don't think we need to define the problem anymore, I think, I think he knows it already.
And I'll, I'll get to, I'm, I should be, so, the, there was the other part about, right, I, we talked about on the agenda item about bringing together airport stakeholders. And the county seemed to kind of wanna fold, my impression, we wanted to fold a lot or all of that into kind of the, kind of the analysis and the consultancy aspect of it. I'm not sure I still agree that there aren't a number of those things in there that, that the county has a lot of, you know, self-control. They don't really need the analyst or the FAA to, to move forward. Meeting with, you know, some of the major stakeholders at the airport doesn't really require anybody else, the county can do that. I'm much expressing how important it is for them to, you know, get on board and take, and take real actionable, you know, steps to help with the problem that we're experiencing, that doesn't take anybody else besides him, him flexing his muscles or the administration flexing their muscles to make sure they're aware and that they, and they're part of the solution. And, you know, so I, I think there are some things in there that I don't, I'd like to encourage him to not wait and not, not put in that first category, and really take some steps, you know, to, to do, you know, the county alone, and, and move quicker so we can see potentially some, some immediate relief.
Yeah.
Because, because those things are possible. Uh, you know, JetBlue, whether it's just informative or, or they can do something about it, you know, doesn't need to take their late night Orlando flight that comes, you know, quite often very late, because it's the late, it's Florida weather, which I understand, and fly it up all the way to Croton Reservoir and come back down. And for me, skies are empty, I don't know why that happens, but that's something they can find out.
We can't have, you, you mentioned in your email, you sure about that? I mean, you sounded very convincing, but you, we can't have terminal fees based on the time of day?
No.
Oh, no, I, I didn't comment on that. Oh, no, I, I didn't comment on that.
No, you can, you can get up to your fees, you can up to your fees.
If you can't, it's
You can have to your fees, okay.
I'm just saying, you can't
Penalize.
Have fees be a penalty or a means to dissuade people from landing at your airport.
But that's what, oh, that's just generally speaking, but we can't have higher fees for
That's definitive. I think that's
Yes, yes.
When somebody's leaving at eleven o'clock at night.
Yes, and you have to justify it based on airport needs, expenditures at the airport. The fees have to be justified by capital expenditures or some other operating need at the airport, not by, we want fewer planes, so let's charge higher fees.
But what about we want fewer planes at night, late at night?
No, but by default, that, that should could happen, because if you're coming to this airport, because it's seventy percent cheaper or fifty percent cheaper.
Right, so, so
You're, you're, it's an economic incentive to come here.
Right. I'd say it's, although I still think they're so small, it's not huge, it's like a bar tab.
Well, depends on the, on the plane.
You know, I, I, I'll tell you, you know, I spoke to, because he said that they were, the county said they were waiting for something back from the AAB.
That's what they mean, you're right.
So I spoke to the AAB Chair last night, and he confirmed that.
For sure.
And the reason why we have not gotten back to the county yet And the reason why we have not gotten back to the county yet was while we have some ideas upon uh dollar levels, we're waiting to get feedback from other airports about how they were handling handling one base versus affiliated aircraft. How they were handling kind of congestion pricing about charging for different levels for time of day. And also whether or not any of them were doing different levels for holidays, different levels for Sunday afternoons.
Right.
You know, so we're trying to understand the full scope of what's being done out there. Uh, so that that's really what's holding it up right now. We have the contacts and we just need to kind of start reaching out to them uh individually, just so we so we can give the county more ammunition and and a better fuller picture of why we think whatever we recommend makes sense and and what are the precedents that are out there.
Right.
That that's what's, and we're gonna hopefully move forward with that, I would say, in the next month, so we can present at the next meeting.
Well, couldn't we just expand the scope of the consultant a little bit to have them come in and tell us how that all works?
Well, I think the the issue is that consultant, I don't know when that consultant is gonna gonna come.
But that's part of the thirty day for us, really, at the conference station.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I was.
Right, so so the consultants could certainly.
Well.
Within thirty days, we know whether we're getting a consultant, right?
Right.
Or where it's gonna come from.
Right.
Wherever you don't know when they're gonna actually track that consulting. It's still not working, it's still working alone, that consultant's gonna tell you everything else in the meantime.
Right.
Right.
But there's, but there's There's a the vanquisher for seeing us on Monday, including that, the vanquisher.
I think within thirty days, we'll know whether the county is going to provide the consultant.
Right, no, correct.
Right, but 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 just so you're aware, whether they provide a consultant to us or not, this is an AAB initiative. The AAB is gonna do this whether we 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 decide we want to do it or not. So it's already something that's in progress outside of the Newcastle Airport Advisory Committee or the town of Newcastle, what we're looking to push for.
Right.
Uh, so that shape is moving. I just want people to be aware of why it had not been provided by a day AAB today.
I need if we get the consultant, we we should be careful with the scope. I mean, we do want to focus on Newcastle. And if you start dealing with regional issues and airport fees, we're gonna lose the uh
Well, I don't think the whole consultant has to be concerned with airport fees, right, it's much more direct.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah. It's directed.
You know, I spoke to somebody else last night, the person who I work with on the AAB uh data subcommittee. And we're starting to look at some of the information we're getting back from the airports, which I shared a little bit with the county executive. Uh, looking at, you know, what the, what we can what we can glean from that. But also kind of the goal of that is to set something up that can run on autopilot. So we don't have to have all these kind of, you know, every once in a while, we do this big analysis. So something that the system kind of spits out every month. So you see all these different metrics. We understand, and everybody understands what's happening at the airport. Why is traffic down? What what why would noise be up a certain place? And I think we're all, we all have learned well enough that the noise monitors don't tell the story at all. Okay, so we can see, you know, how many airplanes flew over this area, how many airplanes flew, and all that information is there. And we'd like to ultimately get to a place where it's all automated. So as part of instead of just like an eight-page report that's done a lot by hand, it's something that's that gets put out automatically by the data that's being put into the system. And this way, everybody's much more educated. And if the trends are changing, you recognize it much quicker as opposed to waking up one day and saying, what happened to the place I used to live? So that that's what's happening on the both the landing fees and the uh and and the data.
Well, in terms of the landing fees too, one of the things that, well, I asked him, we can't penalize, as we've discussed, you can't penalize.
No.
Um, but there is a permissible tiered approach in terms of what time you land, right?
Right.
So you're incentivizing people arguably, planes, pilots to land earlier than later. Why can you not incentivize planes to come in if it's permissible in terms of uh physics uh to come in at a higher altitude? So if if it's within the range, if you come in at X altitude, which you can document and track, your fee will be less for landing.
And all the time. The the ability to be punitive on any type of action, you know, gets into a very sensitive area of the law.
Which incentivizes, not penalizes. Well, we don't know, I mean, I don't know the answer to the question.
We're right there, right, so I I don't know the answer, these are the things that that I think, and one of the things we both met is be what
Is that the tiered approach?
I think it's important for the county to have very specialized counsel. Uh, you know, that that can, and more, that that focuses on advocating for, you know, for re- for residents.
To advocate for their.
And they still have a skill set for advocating, you know, for protecting the county, for looking out for stakeholders. But you really want somebody who knows all the ins and outs and and who, you know, and the full level of flexibility you have in all these areas and really thinks creatively.
Right.
I I don't know the people at Wix enough to come to comment on them. Uh, but but, you know, some of the stuff I seem to date, you know, I'm not, I'm not convinced at this point that that that's necessarily the right person for that job.
There's a lot of complexity as well with the altitude issues, so I think we need to tread really carefully there until we really understand. And again, getting back to the the consultant piece, we really have to understand what's going on and before we come up with any sort of incentive programs.
I guess. I'm sure, I'm sure we could all say twenty thousand different things that aren't viable.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Hey, Rob, on the data piece, when you talk about how the the airport, you know, sends out an eight-page report, is it because the airport is just not technologically savvy where their systems are so archaic that the report that you receive is just so dense and unuser friendly, whereas is there an option to outsource that kind of, you know, information where, you know what I mean? Like, there are a lot of websites like FlightAware, um, I'm sure, yeah, I don't think it's
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily that they're
That's true.
that that they're trying not to do it, it's just that they've never really been, I think, motive, it's never been their mandate to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And just thinking, look, technology, you know, in some ways sometimes causes problems, here's a here's a way where technology can provide some solutions. And I don't think, you know, the people who are there are and some people are very focused on customer service job in terms of, you know, working with people who are filing complaints and tracking down those planes, make sure that they're doing, they're not doing things that they're kind of out out of touch with with the rules that they're supposed to follow. Um, and other people there who, there are a whole bunch of different skill sets. I don't think that providing maximum transparency to educate the entire county about what's happening with all the operations is the what I've seen today is the is the skill set of any one particular person there.
Okay.
And I I just don't think it's been, it it hasn't been an endeavor that anybody's tried to kind of put into place.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So I'm not talking, I'm not giving down on on their motives, it just, that's not their thing, that.
No, not at all. I guess my point is, is that you have a data problem, you're not getting the data, so why don't you hire the people who can get the data? Like, that's where I'm trying to to understand.
Right, and.
And whether the the county outsources that type of technology or outsources computer engineers to to like run a macro and get the information in a solid way, like that's sort of the goal here.
Right, and that Right, and that's what we're talking, that's where I think the endpoint we want to get to is there's this macro that runs at the end end of every month.
Mm-hmm.
I think the date is there.
Right.
But we don't really just take a look, everybody takes a look at it in different ways, you know, I have a very, look
Mm-hmm.
in some ways, I have to guard against when I'm when I'm wearing that hat. And today, I'm like not wearing the AAB hat. I am wearing solely the hat as a resident of Newcastle.
Right.
Okay, but when I'm there, you know, I'm looking at the countywide issues, including, you know, water and noise and emissions and all those types of things.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But here, obviously, I have a much different interest about the environmental impact that's happening to Newcastle, so I think everybody should have the benefit, because even if it's not a problem for somebody today, it could be tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, so, and and so I think we want to set and create the the uh the infrastructure in those kind of reports. So once again, whatever happens, it'll show up. And like, we're not gonna be a year and a half later and saying, what happened?
And so was that discussed at the meeting with with the county executive?
Not not to that level of detail at all, no.
We just talked about we need better data.
We're gonna, we're
We already had an hour.
Yeah, one hour is gonna be a issue.
I do, I do want.
Okay.
But but I think I think our follow up, our follow up thank you slash reminder slash summary of our meeting in this, you know, preferably really this week to say thank you, here are some of the things we discussed, here is what we'd like to see happen, and remind him that nicely that he made that promise to pursue um that expert.
We look forward to his response.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, John?
Yeah, sorry, guys. Uh, I've worked with the FAA, you know, buying, selling airplanes and stuff. And if you go into the Flight Standards District Office.
Ligon?
Yes.
You mean the the one in Malound?
Well, the Garden City, and there's another one near Albany and Leipum, and I don't know which one.
Right. The Garden City is the one that controls the New York, the New York metroplex.
I understand, but you wa- might also have a a of a good relationship if you consider yourself to be upstate New York and go out of Latham, in Leipum.
Latham.
Uh, but anyway, the
Don't call it Latham if you want to be upstate New York.
Yeah. I'll kick you right out.
No, that's all.
Yeah, they don't, guys.
Trust me, you don't want to go to Albany without 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 bullet protectors, so.
I'll see you at Houston Street downtown in that.
But why would we go up there anyway if our um, what is it called, the Trakin, Trakin, something like that, Trakin, Trakin, it's that word.
Yeah, four down the street.
No, walk, there's, here, I'm going with this, okay. They set sites, uh, flight standards. And one of the best, the most important flight standards of the high
House.
uh, when they're, when they're, the way they're coming in and the approaches and all of that, that's all at the district offices. Because when you get that squared away, you know, and they don't give you something you like, and you go to Oklahoma City or uh, you, one of the, one of the other places to do it, but it's very, they're they're fairly approachable. I don't know about Garden City, but I think in La- Leipum they're uh, they're they're somewhat approachable, and that's not too far, that's only Albany.
Right, from what I've been told, and and one of the key people in Garden City, and actually I've seen a map of the of the of the room.
Right.
But there's a Westchester desk.
Yes.
And I think one of the things we requested that the county try and set up for the AAB is kind of a field trip, either bringing that person here.
Yeah.
Or what I would rather see is a field trip to their office to sit next to the the person who's doing that, to see actually how how he runs his desk.
Well, you can just block his car in if he wants to go home. You know, I mean, uh
Or which way I come home, you know.
No, no, you don't want to do that, because that's, but the point that I'm trying to make is the these folks are under a a lot of pressure. But on one-on-one, I found them to be eminently approachable and upon attending. And that that might be what you can do while you're waiting for this period to go by. So you can multitask and continue the the program that you out outlet. I I love seeing this much interest of of anything in time of Newcastle. I mean, this this speaks to a widespread problem and one that 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 should be done. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to suggest to you guys is that uh, somebody at somewhere between five and seven uh, go to Greeley High School, the fields, the open field, you get a good rank, you can see them make the turn going in, and that quantifies more than anything you can do. So you take a video and you just say how many seconds in between. And and there you go, and that's definitely, so I just wanted to make those brief suggestions. I hope it's helpful with the discussion. I will now sit down and shut up.
Thanks, John.
Rob, um, the data you've talked about is a lot, um, Rob Fleischer, the data you've talked about really is focused on the operational aspects of the airport, flights coming in and out um, the radar data. One of the the pieces of data I I I hope you'll also sort of try to work with the county um with is is modeling data that is out there. I I in the last few days have collected an enormous amount of data that FAA has produced on sound modeling. And it models our town, um, there's probably three hundred data points in our town that were modeled to to project this and and that they did in the two thousand six, seven, eight period. The data is, I mean, a cast of what FAA is projecting or modeling is is a dark cloud over Newcastle, frankly. And and I think some of it is, uh, the question is, has that been implemented? Uh, we think the storm's here, but others have been suggesting to me in the last couple of days that it's just beginning. And it's gonna get a lot worse as 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 the whole um sort of um regional airport traffic system gets implemented. And one of the the pieces in the FAA Authorization Reauthorization Act of two thousand eighteen, uh, there's some good things in there, and I think um, the uh, Latimer mentioned it in his letter. Uh, but there's some some sort of things that are questionable in there, and one is the uh, the little section that says within ninety days, there needs to be a timetable for implementing the rest of the uh, the regional airspace renovation sort of program. Uh, and that will have what the FAA projects to be a pretty negative impact on Newcastle. We don't, but I think there's data there that the county has, they've used, some of their consultants they hired through time have been using that data. Um, it may may not be update, uh, up to date in the last like year or so, but uh, it's important stuff. I think it takes a picture.
So Jim, this is from two thousand eight? You said it's two thousand six?
Yeah, so the the effort um that um through the environmental impact statement that the uh FAA put out uh in in little fanfare um, in two thousand six. Um, the data that accompanied that was sound modeling data for all, you know, literally from Philly up to Boston, uh, every county. And that data's, you know, I have that data and, you know, I've plotted on a map, so you can see if if there's no action taken by FAA, meaning they leave the air system as it is uh, what the sort of sound levels will be over Rob's house, um, over, you know, and this is, this is that DNL measurement that that is often talked about. Um, and then, once they um renovate the the traffic system, um, modernize it, uh, so that flights come in lower to LaGuardia, which pushes our planes down lower here. Um, that that's one type of of thing that they've, and I think they've already done that in in many ways, so whether they they they'll they'll tell us they haven't, but but we're seeing it. Uh, but it it will say what the projected sound, what the models say, uh, based on the traffic they forecast back in two thousand five, when they were generating data. Um, what the sound impact will be, what's the decibel difference of that DNL. And when you, I'm not sure the the modeling they did is exactly what we're seeing today, because they were projecting an increase of you know, if you look at a place like the far west end of town, the track, the the increase in decibels is on the log scale, is like a sixty percent increase um, on the daily average um, the sound. Uh, so what that means for, you know, when you actually boil it down to how many flights per day, it's it's dramatic increase. Um, and you can see that in different parts of town. Um, and and I think that that what we're seeing there, that increase is is um, is pretty dramatic. But I also think that map changed um at in two thousand eight, when all of this was coming out, some towns were very, very focused. Ponridge was had an an incredibly organized effort. Greenwich were were threatening and throwing lawsuits around left and right. They had the help of Senator Lieberman, Ponridge had the help of Senator Schumer. Um, they got they got to FAA, they got responses from FAA, I mean, there was this enormous amount going on at that time um, to try to move the map around a little bit. And there's some sort of, you know, we don't know what the final math looks like, because they, the environmental impact statement had this forecast. And the FAA said, we've considered everyone's public in input, and we've we've um come to a conclusion. And they've approved that conclusion, whether they approved the new map. They they never published new sound data, new modeling, because there was no need to in their minds. So we don't know what, you know, if it shifted a little bit more towards the center of our town, or it 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 seems to have. But but that's, I think, an important starting point to know, like, where it's, what they were looking before, especially before any conversations happened on FAA. What were they, you know, really forecasting and wanting to do at the time, and what still has to be implemented tomorrow?
I, could I say that? I think that really brings up an important point, though, because we don't have a date for this meeting with the FAA. My concern is, we could go into that not being educated in terms of what the problem is and therefore not having an ask of them, that will will prove fruitful. Um, I think we really need to understand.
It's just the public commentating, with a bunch of people complaining, fine, but if we really need to ask, even know what the problem is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's all that is, yeah.
I think what Jim just said screens to me that we need a consultant, because this information is all out there, it's all out there.
Yes.
Years and years of data is out there. Jim was able to dig it up just in a couple of days of digging.
Pretty skilled.
There's people out there who do this for a living, this is what they do. They do this for a living. They know where to go for the data, the data is out there, it's publicly available, and they can distill it down and figure out what happened. Because until we know what happened, I mean, I'm all for going forward, having better data and having somebody put together better reports, that doesn't help us for now, for how we got the situation we're in now, and how to potentially go about trying to fix that.
That's an educated response.
And and look, I get that we're going to the county and we'll sit for thirty days and see what happens. You'll know that I'm not particularly, uh, I don't think that we're gonna get very far, but we'll see, maybe I'll be proven wrong.
But you may be proven wrong, and it may not be, but you have to make the ask and you have to engage, because if we want to stick our nose up saying it's not gonna do it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely did the right thing.
We're gonna burn bridges.
Totally agree, but I just don't think we should sit on our laurels in the meantime, and I really think we need to maybe start thinking about what would the next steps be for us if in fact
Yeah, well.
we don't have any progress, or we don't have progress that we think is what Newcastle needs to get its questions answered.
Yeah, we have to.
We we screen, which, which is better.
So maybe we should consider putting out a RFP for our own consultant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Or at least start working on it.
Which we don't have, working on it, we don't have to hire anybody, but at least to get it available, so if the county doesn't
So if the county doesn't come through, we at least can then move on right away and we're ready for our next step.
We're ready to go.
But, 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 but I will tell you, just from the data that I have seen, and this isn't ordered by an outside, is that, you know.
That's a great idea.
Absolutely correct.
The flight paths don't seem like they've changed, the general flight paths don't seem like they've changed that much. You know, over the past, you know, ten, to, to, to thirteen years, I mean, that, that, you look back. And actually, if you look at two thousand five, there was a lot more volume of operations back then, just according to the data that, 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 that the county has. Now, I can't tell you what types of planes were flying back then. There were no A three twenties, you know, these big jumbo jets that jet, that JetBlue uses now. All these planes that Net, NetJets wouldn't even at the airport now, at, at that point in time. And now they are the, the most, the, the largest operator at the airport. So a lot of things have changed in terms of, you know, the climate of the airport. So, and, and, and those types of quantitative issues as opposed, or qualitative issues as opposed to quantitative issues are also really important, understanding, you know, what's happened. But the actual, you know, they haven't changed the, uh, the approach planes or things like that, they've really been the same. If you look at, you know, four different places in time, uh, we looked at it for two thousand eighteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand ten, two thousand five. Now, what has changed from my perspective, and, and I could see, that, when people start saying, well, what's changed in the past few years? And I think George even led the meeting off like this and say, you know, you guys are suffering through a convergence of the flight path, you know, o- over Newcastle.
Called Operation Choke Point.
And.
Did he, did he, did he, did he mention, if I'm not mistaken, that Pleasantville was suffering from the same problem in parts of North Castle, Armunk?
I think we said that.
Would, would, did I, no, he didn't say that, I thought he was.
Well, I, I.
Well, he, he said he's getting a lot of complaints from Pleasantville too.
Pleasantville too.
Right, they did, they did.
Because it's the same issue for the.
If, if you look at that straight on approach, you know, and you go out like, like ten miles or so, okay? We're about miles like ten through like four and a half, or ten through five. And then there's like two and a half of Pleasantville and two and a half of, of North Castle. So we take the lion's share of the action, and the flights are pretty much all around two thousand feet, they're supposed to be, you know, in those, in those levels. But, and, I think as I mentioned the other day, it's just, for Pleasantville, it's the extreme right, uh, easternmost part of Pleasantville. And for Armunk, it's the extreme most westernmost part of Armunk. So it's not a lot of people who are, who are being impacted. And the thing that I've noticed that's changed is, you know, as opposed to the percentage of flights which used to kind of come in and join that, that, that path downwards. And when they're approaching from, from the north, uh, I think, you know, in recent years, when you look just the past couple of years and say, what's changed here? It seems to have exponentially increased. So you have more, more operations, more use of runway sixteen, and more planes that are hugging, that are going higher and, and coming down the entirety of Newcastle. Which as opposed to making a, a tighter turn down at the outer marker, which really is at the very, very bottom of Newcastle is mostly. If they did that, or is gonna be involved with, in North Castle, or if they're coming the other way, uh, they would go through Mount Pleasant slash Pleasantville.
So this is precisely why we need a subject math expert.
So.
Yeah, so follow up with Susan's saying is, we need an expert, we need somebody to come up with a strategic plan, whether it's through the courts.
Because. Yeah.
Or it's through the government, or it's both, and then we need to activate it.
Yeah.
Um, I think self-diagnosing this problem is, we, we're a year and a half late at this point. We've been talking in the same conversation since we started this.
I agree.
I, I think we also have to take a look at what other communities around the country who are facing this issue have done. And they have all done that, they've engaged with consultants, they've understood the problem, they've, they've gathered the, the correct data and, and they've moved forward with engaging the F A A.
Yes.
So, do you think there's a way, I, that the A A C could maybe try to research R F Ps? That some of these other, um, cities and communities have used for private consultants? Cause I think that would be a good place to start. To start drafting our own so that we kind of have it done and ready to go within thirty days if we get information that we don't like.
Yes, I was trying to dig up some names.
Well, I think all these people get the cost, the, the costs associated with those and the other places that have done it. And also whether it's brought in by the municipality itself, or if it's being brought in by any kind of.
Right, but cost, I mean, that's, we're gonna get that when we get the R F P.
But I, I think.
Which, which is a good point.
Which companies were remodeling our problem off of East Hampton?
No, no.
Well, we could look at Phoenix, we could look at Palo Alto, there's just, there's many opportunities, so we can engage with everybody.
Phoenix?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
I, I think it's very important that they leave this, that we leave this meeting tonight with a clear idea of who's doing what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Massachusetts.
If, if the town board, if, if we are gonna take and draft the thank you note to county executive, along with recapping. Along with what exactly we expect to see, um, we are looking forward to seeing in the next thirty days.
Right.
And what the airport advisory committee is going to be, uh, tasked with going forward.
Yeah.
So that, you know, it's great to have these discussions, but, um, unless we are left with a clear cut idea of what our next steps are and who's doing what.
Okay.
We don't have.
Well, at least it's one on point.
So I think the town should be drafting the letter.
Yeah. Got it.
Of course.
And we can, we'll do that by.
And I think the unity should be looking into the R F Ps and kind of trying to compile a great draft.
I'll do that by Friday.
That we can then look at and figure out what we need and what we wanna use, so we can have that letter.
We should also.
I, I would, I would also ask all the town board, and Rob, you, you mentioned it in the email chain last week as we were all putting together the, the agenda. Need a lowy, Jill LeBrand, Schumer, every, every elected official from you up.
Jeff Miller.
Mm-hmm.
That touches this district, this area.
Well, cut. Uh-huh.
Absolutely, from you, the town board, needs to be advised that we're, we're, we're sick of it, we've been sick of it. We're taking action, we've met with Latimer, Latimer's supposed to be giving back to us, we've started that dialogue. And we need you, 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 to come on board with this. And if, if they're not educated, get educated, we're all happy to talk to them. And get on, get on our side of the, on, on our bench. Because if you look at all the other, if you look at many of the other towns, and this is through various, uh, Sky Action Network, you know, Facebook pages and other things. That a number of us are, are members of and you're reading positive results. Part of it is blowing smoke, part of it is political area, but the thank yous start with you guys, with your level, and go all the way up to senator level. And unless there's buy-in, we're all sitting around this.
Yep.
Well, that, that's what Kirsch said, and Kirsch said seventy-five percent of the solution is, I don't know what the percentage was, but he said eighty percent of the solution is gonna be political.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
But by the way, at this meeting, Latimer did say that he was gonna reach out to all those people. So the first step is, I, you know, in the letter that I'll draft by Friday, remind him that that's something very important, that we want that meeting. And then we could also, you know, draft another letter.
Yeah, I think.
But basically, we, you know, he mentioned that he was gonna be setting up that meeting.
And he also mentioned. And, and expect. Except he might, he has the larger county issues at heart.
Right.
Whereas we're more concerned with what's impacting us. So I think if he wants to contact them, that's great, but I think we also need to do that on our particular behalf.
Well, that's true.
Well, and we're not mutually exclusive.
Right, and, and, you know, additively.
They are not mutually exclusive, but I think.
Some we can do is, right, he can.
Well, do both.
I don't know that he's gonna advocate for us as a quality.
Additively, someone who's.
Right, I'm saying, that's why.
Does anybody know Quomel, is he helpful at all? He has, they have to go over his house.
Well. We'll see it, we'll see him in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, hi.
But, but maybe he's never there, so it doesn't matter, but they have to.
You gotta just talk.
One last thing before we close this out.
I'm in polite.
Is, before we close this out, is there, is there a, is there a, um, does Pleasantville and North Castle, if, if Latimer's getting arguments and issues with the same thing? Which is low-flying planes and noise, do they have a, a similar body in a, in an air force, air force, pardon me? Do they have an air force?
No.
Next up, next up.
You don't think that would be.
They have nothing, because, because this is an example, we're discussing, and we're going back and forth this other day. You know, it, it is our issue, but if the people who share that same issue as opposed to different issues around the county. If you have multiple municipalities with one voice for the same issue, maybe in full, eighty percent, whatever it may be, we have more power with more municipalities.
The only other airport.
So, they would be someone to work with, both potentially, even with our own consultant potentially, if they share in the same or enough of the same.
I think that the challenge may be though, there's a lack of engagement in those communities from what we've seen.
Maybe we could poke up a Royal Bear.
Yeah.
Ken, you think, you wanna finish? Yeah, the only, yeah, the only thing I was gonna say was, some, another resident who's had a number of informal conversations with us. And has spoken with a number of elected officials, where he started getting responses was when he would send the letter to whichever elected official. And copy every single other person to, so every single elected official knew that everyone else was getting this letter. And shockingly, people started reaching out, cause they don't wanna be the one who didn't say anything. Right. And so it's political, you know, some political pressure. Copying them on the letter, our thank you letter to Latimer, hey, here, we're engaged, he's now engaged, here's the conversation that's going, come aboard our train. Not playing. Is there any movement from that consortium, that guy Peter that was here?
Right, movement in terms of what?
Oh, has anything materialized out of that group that?
Well, the, the, well, what, what the coalition has spent their time doing.
We've got fifteen more items on the list.
That would do.
Uh, they, they, they focused a lot in the last month on the water issue.
We tried to end our meetings on the same day as the start.
You reported, and there was a press conference they held.
That's, that's.
And the county has actually been very, very receptive to, to, to the water issue and, and they're kind of working together to, to, to draft some legislation. So that you can't have a situation where water testing is turned off again for eight years.
Right, right.
And you can run into problems.
Right, Doc, Doctor Bieber just wanted to say what data.
We just, um, we all agree most of the noise is from the private jets.
Right.
Has anyone tried to speak to any of the pilots? They're on the air, they know what's happening, they know what might be able to solutions are. I think, uh, I don't know if they'd be willing to speak to us, I'm thinking that gets some good suggestions from pilots.
We could try.
You know, I, my sense of, of having a sit-down is that the, and I, and I, I think it's.
Again, the bar.
They're not, they're not thinking straight forward, because a lot of the pilots, you think, on the Westchester flying, okay? People in s- small, you know, Sessom type planes. I think that's a lot more what the airport used to be. If you look at one of the charts the county gave us, it used to be like three times as many operations by those types of planes were based with the airports. Um, and yet they, and they, they've kind of gotten a little bit screwed over by some of the new leases, which have not protected. Some of the light general aviation, uh, planes that, 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 that they fly. So, so they're wary of some of the new activist members here. And they're, they're buying into more some of the other, uh, people who are talking about, we just wanna shut down the airport and do all these other things. And so we're not the most people asking these kind of questions, or me personally, I'll tell you. Somebody came up to me who's a senior member of one of those organizations, and he was not a fan.
Okay, we gotta wrap this up. I'm gonna treat it like when Trump takes questions, thank you everybody, okay. Thank you everybody, thank you.
But I think we all have our marching orders and we will, we'll.
He still answers that question.
Yeah, it'd be good to see.
Thank you everybody, thank you. Thank you, okay, everybody out, thank you.
Welcome guys, welcome guys.
Thank you.
Eric, how are you? Eric, she can dapper.
You can leave the chair, you don't have to move the chairs.
Let him carry it out.
He said, carry the chair, right?
Here's the one person also. Leave it for Eric to carry it out. Eric, Eric would take it out, we'll get Eric to take it out.
Yeah, let's hear the welcome guy.
All right, welcome guy, before you come to.
All right.
Hi Eric.
I got one quick question.
With that water issue that the coalition has raised, do we by any chance know if New York City Water Department has been involved in that at all? Cause it's their main supply to New York City.
I'm sorry, what am I talking about?
The water issue over at the.
Talking about the reservoir by the airport.
With their, with alleging about the runoff into the reservoir.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they are, and I think Latimer, Latimer said something about that.
I'll take it out too.
Cause I, I've heard, I've heard nothing back from here.
Maybe I can make a little better, I don't think you have any. Take it out, okay?
Okay.
I'm not sure what check on it.
Thank you.
All right, so.
All right, next thing on the agenda. Welcome guys, is Grace still here, or she just missed out?
Grace?
She didn't leave.
Hey Jim, can you get Grace Bennett back in here? Grace Bennett, does she leave or?
She's not leaving, she knows we're doing it.
Okay. All right, start with me. All right, so, uh, we could just to, uh. Let's do the next one. Change orders. Okay, ELQ, where did we put the, um, uh, in so long? Um, so there are, uh, two change orders that are, are coming down, they're not gonna be paid until next week, but I just want to let the board know about them. One of them is, um, we were hoping to change, to save the three trees that were alongside the Seagulls parking lot. When they put the sidewalk in, they like almost flooded up right against the, uh, the tree trunk, all those roots are gone. So those three trees had to be removed, the barren pears, so we'll be putting them back, um. So I think, uh, there was a change order for three trees and, uh, three tree grates. Uh, so that's there, and then the other thing is, is that there was a drainage project that we had done, uh, in front of Verizon. Uh, gosh, months ago, um, there was some drainage work, there were some underground conduits that we had compromised with. Well, we told the ELQ to just go ahead and, you, you have to leave it open, it's, you know, a meeting.
I don't see why, why.
Can't close the door, can't close, can't close the town to be. Well, it's a costly thing, I think you just ask them to keep it down.
We'll just try to.
I'll move it out of there.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
So finish, finish up, so go ahead.
So I'm sorry, so, um, it, it was a change order we were, we were waiting for, um, ELQ had put in some, uh, tower lights. And John Kazwick had sort of fought them with it, uh, tooth and nail, because it was day work and they couldn't justify the, the, the light towers on it. So basically, they took and they knocked the light towers off of it, I think it ended up being seventy-eight and seventy thousand dollars change.
But why are we, why are we, I'm confused, why are we designing it?
Well, no, no, it, because there were conflicts with underground. They opened up the ground and found a surprise, found a surprise.
Much like anything else.
Spent a surprise.
The kind of, why is it not moving the wires?
You know, verify in the building, yeah, they weren't moving, they couldn't move the wires evidently, whatever, it's an underground.
Got you, got you, got you.
It's like a feet station, you know, feats of their.
Probably big wires.
It's kind of like the surprise that contaminated the soil.
So there's going to be that change order as well, um, they are on, I don't think the tree one is on here, uh, it wasn't very much money, it was under a couple thousand dollars.
Will we use the tree fund for that?
Oh, we could use the tree fund for that, we can't use it for the tree grates, I don't believe.
I mean, it's not that much money, but still.
Doesn't matter, it's, it's the purpose of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I will find out if we can use, can we use, uh.
I think that's totally a public gun.
Trees, that kind of makes sense.
I think I, I think we decided we could use it, right.
Okay, but the grates for the tree, oh, yeah, I think some, we would have covered. Yeah, okay, yeah, um, okay, and you're gonna notice that, uh, I asked Rob Dearie to look in, did you see, we've got maps, we have. Maps, we have. I saw that, I, I don't know if we wanna discuss it right now, but. Not, yeah. Okay?
We got them.
I did see some numbers. Yeah, numbers there for you. Okay.
How much of that did we discuss, what came in for the soil removal and the soil, the hazardous soil, that?
Total number.
The to, but we don't have it, it's, it's a not to exceed number.
And that's just some of bad luck, so we're now just on, on that particular finding contaminated soil.
So it's three. Yes.
And the Verizon lines, we're talking about four hundred grand, is that right?
Oh, with contaminated soil, it's more than that.
Three thirty-seven, five hundred.
Right, plus.
Three thirty-seven is for the new change order, um, it's four fifty.
Plus the four fifty.
Right, so you're talking, so why, so I'm mistake, right, so I'm mistaking, that's, that's a lot more, um, it's just basically, it's no fault of our own, just.
Yes.
It's four fifty plus three fifty.
Earth. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's three thirty-seven.
So basically, it's, uh, eight hundred thousand.
Plus, plus it's now Verizon wires which is a lot.
From just, from the move, which contaminates, uh, contaminated soil.
Well, I, you know, to a certain extent, there's lots of things that are going on, there's nothing you can do about finding contaminated soil and finding conflicts that you can't see unless you're Superman.
Right.
It's a significant number, and, and again.
But unfortunately, it would have been better if it was obviously like fifty to a hundred thousand.
And, and again, we can potentially recoup some of those monies to the state, is that right?
No, you can't.
Because we weren't able to pin it to a particular source area.
They, they, they're not petroleum.
They were.
Right.
It wasn't made at all.
It's contaminated, but not contaminated.
Right, exactly correct.
You should have poured gas on them, just kidding.
Just like those, totally conscious.
Yeah, I did see, but at some point in executive session, maybe the next one probably should discuss the numbers again. Happy to, yeah, they're not going away, so. I know. I wish they were, but they're not.
Okay, are we done?
Okay, yes. Yep.
All right, so next thing is, we're gonna jump right to the, um.
Welcome guy.
Welcome guide, and we have Grace here. So Grace, I had suggested, and I, we spoke to you about it, was updating the welcome guide. As you know, and we did it, what was it, two thousand seventeen?
Two years ago.
No, it was four years ago.
Two thousand sixteen, actually.
Four year.
It was two thousand sixteen, we had proved it in two thousand fifteen, I think, I don't remember, but whatever, was it two thousand fifteen?
It's at least three years.
I think it was two thousand fifteen, actually, it was two thousand fifteen.
This, I wasn't expecting this, I just came for the Holocaust more.
Oh.
So I was a little, I'm surprised.
We, she's gotta read the changes before she comes.
But basically, we talked about, you know, updating the welcome guide and I, I thought, uh, you know, now would be a good time, we, we have a lot of, uh. I mean, anything we could do to help the town, we should do. I think it was incredible last time, I think a lot of people do, and a lot of brokers, cause I sometimes will speak to the brokers. It's, you know, they have these Tuesday morning meetings and I go there sometimes, and, um, and they always ask me about the welcome guide.
They've asked me too, when I'm updating it.
My, my question, which I raised to Rob and raised to my colleagues, was, I think the welcome, uh, welcome, the welcome guide is a good idea. But we're not. But we're not, you know, we're hitting two thousand twenty almost, and while I am not the most savvy, I see it all over the city. I take my phone to a barcode and zoop, and you know, I get whatever I want. And, you know, why not do this online and so that if I'm coming to Newcastle, even before I get here, I could say, oh, look at this great restaurant. Oh, wait, this is this great shop. Oh, look at this part of the community. Um, and in lieu of, you know, having a paper copy, because speaking for myself, I would feel, yeah, I would feel that. You can constantly update one online. In terms of revenues and dollars, you know, if people can still advertise, right, I can sponsor this page, I can have a specific section for realtors. For caterers, for camps, whatever it may be. It just seems to be that that may make more sense and in lieu of, in lieu of having a twenty, thirty, ten, whatever it may be page guide, however long and big it is. You could have a sheet of paper that could be handed out at a realtor's office, be left at the, you know, if people come off at the train station. Instead of all bulky, a lot of the materials, and it can have a website or a barcode and you can zap it and go right to the site you wanna go and now I have it.
And not only that, but when people start looking to buy homes, which is what the realtors is interested in, the buyers. You know, a lot of their research about the community, what the community is like, what the schools are like, you know.
Like on Zillow.
So on so forth, you could have a link and the link could actually tell them, learn more about the community. And it would, I think, reach a much broader potential audience than a print guide that, you know, people may or may not keep. And I think that, you know, one of the things that makes this community such an interesting place to live are all of the activities that go on throughout the year. The fact that it isn't kind of an anonymous place, that there are actually, uh, community events. And it's something that could be, whether you updated on a quarterly basis, you set out a deadline, or whether you updated, you know, every six weeks. And a lot of the stuff is recurring, so it's like you could almost look at the past year and replicate eighty percent of it, it's the twenty percent that changes. And it gives you greater depth, more photos and things like that. Why can't we do both and have one that's handed out? Because I think people do like that and you come and you take it with you and you're looking at it while you go sit down and have lunch at one of the, you know, our restaurants. And then still update it online. I think, I think a hundred percent we're moving toward digital and it should be online and should be updated. But I still think, I still like the print.
How much did the print cost?
Print is for us, like our generation, my kids look at.
Wait, Ivy, Ivy wants to say something.
Books, they look at Kindles, how many times you go to a restaurant and people are thumbing through.
Somebody's looking at.
Sorry Ivy, go ahead Ivy. Ivy, what's your last name?
I'm sorry, I, I wanted to point out that we have authorized spending for the Discover Chappaqua website. And I feel like there's a lot of overlap between the content that will be on that plate and the content that would be in the welcome guide. Um, and so I actually don't know, and you know, Grace, I guess this is a question for you or it could be a question for Rob or Lisa. I remember, um, was on the board, whether this was approved a lot of times, because I wasn't obviously. Um, was, what we were using your services for, Grace, was that both the content and the publishing piece? Because my concern is that if we update it now, um, are we essentially then contacting with two people, two entities to give us content that's largely.
Grace, come closer. Can you all just come closer, because I'm right in here.
Yeah, sorry, that, because there's a lot of background noise from outside.
Before Grace, before Grace answered, I just wanna, I wanna say one thing.
I should hurt it.
Keeping, Grace, I think we'll revisit this. First of all, I think we need to look at, instead of everybody hypothesizing, I mean. The brokers had a thousand copies each and the brokers essentially funded this, right? They all gave, last time, twenty-five hundred dollars for it. And if they didn't, if they didn't want it, first of all, they wouldn't be asking for it. So obviously, the people that are buying homes took them, took them, all one thousand, and the brokers asking for more. And the brokers will be funding it again. So if we're talking about having it.
Then why do brokers have to do it? Why is the town doing it?
Why are they going and contacting with Grace?
Well, they would, we'd actually be doing it because a lot of the content is town content, we'd also be getting it.
We'd be offering that to her for free.
We'd also be, we'd also be getting a thousand copies.
They don't really fund it, they're buying bulk supplies for me, I give them a price for bulk supplies.
Right, and the advertisers also, Grace, you could.
Where does bulk supply me?
Meeting, if they get a thousand copies, I give them an estimate for how much that's gonna cost.
Oh, so you charge them on a per copy basis?
I go to my printer and I.
So you were paid by the town for the development of it and then they went and bought bulk supplies?
No, that's not what happened. We, the town shipped in, well.
Thank you, Grace.
Well, I'll answer the question since I was involved in it and I was the one who actually recruited the brokers with the idea. So what actually happened, I also put together stands for them. So what happens is, we're putting that aside.
Such talent.
Yes, very talented. I was, I was very invested.
Go ahead, do it.
I was very invested in making it work. But what happens is, what I was gonna say is that the brokers. Now I lost my train of thoughts.
We're talking about brokers' copies.
What's the saying, who paid for money?
We're talking about bulk copies, who paid for what and what's the bulk copies asking?
The part of the deal, part of the deal was that they paid twenty-five hundred dollars and they got a thousand dollars each. And they want, they wanted to give it out to their potential buyers, right, and the advertisers too.
Those cost, I mean, the thousand pieces cost more. It was, I just, yeah, they were, it, yes.
People that advertised wanted it mailed to all seven thousand residents. That's how she got the people that advertised it. This thing didn't cost. Because the town, I think, last time paid, I think it was seventy-five hundred, maybe it was ten thousand, I don't remember what it was, was it ten thousand?
We had a bunch of town camps, we have a lot of stuff there.
So why don't we just.
We're editorial development.
But within, why don't we just pay for advertising?
We had sixty percent, you can't pay for it, we had sixty percent of the content was town content. And we also own that content now, which we can use for Discover Chappaqua and for anything else. And the content happens to be incredible, not just about our, every single park and all our committees, but also about all the different school districts in the town. And pictures of the superintendents and all that stuff, it all needs to be updated. But the content was incredible. And the fact is, the advertisers spent that money. This was funded by the advertisers and the brokers.
What's the town's, why don't, can you give me a sense of how?
And those are the people that you need to keep happy.
The funding sources were. So we paid you how much money for content development?
Ten thousand dollars.
Okay, then there was the printing, which we purchased a thousand copies.
No, it's okay.
No, I, okay, it was a mail request.
Right.
That was supplied by the town, correct?
Okay.
Alright.
The tax rules.
Right, um, I developed all the ideas, I assigned all the articles, I edited all the articles, I worked with the town closely on approvals. And then the, then there were four, um, real estate houses and each bought twenty-five hundred pieces each.
And they got ads?
Uh, twenty thousand pieces each. I don't remember the exact number.
No, they, they, they checked in twenty-five hundred and they each got a thousand copies with the sale.
A number.
Something like that.
And did they also advertise in the guide? Did you take ads in the guide?
Yeah, then, then we took, I should've brought a guide, I'm sorry.
I last had probably, yeah, I was a little tired of it, yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, so yeah, and I also took ads, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was a money-making proposition with me, not enough.
No, no, that's totally fine, it's just. That's a sort of sign.
The reason the brokers are asking for it is because it was actually incredible.
Yeah, no work.
And, yeah, and when, and you're selling, Hal, I appreciate your, your opinion about what people are looking for and how they made the decision.
So, yeah.
But the brokers actually, the reason they like it is because they realize that they're selling, not just they're selling the house, they're selling, they're selling the town.
Oh, that's right.
And when people go to Armonk, and when they go to Chappaqua, and they go to Scarnsdale, you wanna leave with, you want them to leave with something that just, they leave with a packet. And it's a packet full of paper. And it has all the houses they looked at, and it also has.
And does the town pay for it?
No, obviously we don't pay for it.
Does the town, does the town pay for that packet? I mean, basically, you're asking the town to underwrite the payment of that packet when we're also.
No, I, no, no.
Well, the twenty-five hundred dollars per broker, that's more than what it costs for a thousand dollars.
Scarnsdale Bro. L.
So it's two hundred.
That, that helped to fund it as well.
That's a lot.
That helped to fund it.
So Hal, you don't think, you don't think the real estate, you don't think the real estate offices would do that?
Right, it was more than a thousand.
Here's, here's another one that I'm concerned.
I, I will tell you, I've been going, I've been going to colleges and lately, and we get a brochure from every college.
They did it.
They've funded our, your.
And they do it again.
And yes, I could look online at every single place, but you know what, you don't, and it means something to be able to sit in the car afterward.
But you don't.
Or wherever it is and have something in your hand and look at it. And that's what's going on.
Let's assume.
I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna make a campaign suggestion.
My turn.
Let's not have any campaign mailers. Now, I'm not, I know it's a campaign election season, but the truth is, nobody, I'll tell you where it's coming from.
Where's the campaign?
That nobody would agree to that because people know that the, Tyler, let me finish my sentence.
It's bizarre.
People know that the campaign mailers work when they show up in everybody's mailbox. So the fact is, so the fact is.
I can't, I'm not even my own.
I don't know what this has to do with this.
The fact is, everybody could say that it should live online, it's better online, blah, blah, blah. The reality is, is that when you get something shiny in the mailbox, as Grace knows, because she does this for a living, people still look at it, as Martin knows too. People still look at it. There's a lot of content that lives online, but people still look at it.
I used something that happened to me just yesterday, interaction. A social media consultant, all she does is, is work with people on social media and online, that's, that's how she makes her, you know, living.
Moving.
Um, she had pitched a story idea to me at one point and I said, yes, okay, and we, and I ran an article in the magazine. I won't say who or what, whatever, doesn't really matter. But she sent me an email the other day saying, um, is a story out? And I said, yes, you can read it online. And then she wrote back, oh no, did it make it into print? And I went, yes, it's in print. And she goes, and she sent back, phew. So what, I mean, here's somebody who makes her entire living online, yet she understands the value of print. Oh, no, I know.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, more, more new.
Because I think that the challenge here is, what's the sole purpose of the welcome guide?
Yeah, it's.
Is it a marketing tool to get people to move to Chappaqua? Is it a tool for residents who currently live here so that they have more information that's on paper? For me, candidly, if you're gonna invest in print, I think that your goal here is to get more people to live, to move to Chappaqua, correct? Like you want a broader track space. And so the welcome guide is a perfect vehicle for that. However, I don't think that the, the welcome guide is useful for someone like John who's lived here and he's like, I know when the Rotary Club pancake. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think that the website is absolutely useful.
So hold on, so you can go back, let me, let me see, hold on, hold on.
And Charlie's.
Okay, fair enough, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go on the.
When we're discussing, when we're discussing.
I'm happy though.
When we're discussing the purpose of it.
And I appreciate it.
Yeah, the whole thing. Okay. We don't, maybe we don't wanna nail it, maybe. Jeremy, what do you say?
Thank you, thank you. You are going, we're gonna put out a welcome guide to a town that we don't have a Chappaqua, we don't know what's coming to Chappaqua crossing in terms of restaurants and stores. We don't know, we have housing coming there. We have, we're talking about a memorial for the Holocaust, we're talking about, um, a new playground, a new basketball court. We're talking about a streetscape. What you put out today ain't gonna be Chappaqua in a year or two. I'm not talking a little different. It's gonna be Newcastle between, you know, maybe sidewalks and Millwood, you know, you know, it's gonna be a different animal. So to do a welcome guide for Newcastle, when you have the hamlets changing, um, so significantly, is, is short sighted. Because you're not gonna sell it when you don't have the product to sell for really about another year. When this is done, the playground, basketball court is done, there, we have, we're filming Chappaqua crossing, maybe there's more sidewalks. Um, uh, the chap pack is, is in a different shape than it is now. There's that, again, the Memorial, Holocaust Memorial, so it's not gonna be remotely updated. So why do we, why are we doing this now?
But that, but that's how you, but the way you look at it.
We do this, we do this later, if we're gonna do it.
First of all, let me say, let me say two things. I mean, somebody said that four years ago too.
But no, it's vastly different. Don't, you can't compare Newcastle what it will be.
But, but. But the. Yeah, well, let's, we'll talk about four years ago in a second and we will compare what's happened with the last welcome guide, which again, people love, there it is, and then people are asking for more. And back then, we had no supermarket in the whole freaking town. We also had, didn't have the Chappaqua Performing Arts, we also didn't have all our green initiatives. We also didn't have the Millwood Garden, we also didn't have the streetscape coming in. There's a million things that have changed since then. Because we are a green town and that's how we can promote ourselves, with arts and culture, with the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center, with brand new streetscapes, which we will have the pictures come September. Because it'll be done. And the town is gonna be a lot better now than it was four years ago when the last edition came out.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, oh, no.
And Grace, when I mentioned four years ago that maybe we didn't have to mail to everybody, because that was an expensive component. Your response was, and I assume it's the same response, but we'll soon, we'll find out, was that your advertisers wanted to mail to everybody. And that's why we mailed to people. It was not meant really for existing residents. It was meant as a way to sell the town, but the advertisers wanted to mail to everybody, that was important to them. And that's the only reason it was mailed to everybody. And by the way, that became a huge campaign issue back then because it was being mailed to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody was like, ooh, you're doing this just for the campaign. And quite honestly, I didn't even want it mailed to everybody, but the advertisers wanted to mail to everybody.
Right. I totally understand. I guess, but to Hal's point though, is that she said like eighty percent of the community events don't change.
I think you're a year too soon. I think you're a year too soon.
And I think that that's really meaningful for, for new, new people to move into town.
You look at the content.
So there's content in that guide that is meaningful, that should be printed in a book. And I think that you guys can absolutely meet in the middle somewhere. Because as a new home, or as a lot of families who are looking to move to Chappaqua, they don't like going on the website. They like something that's, you know, handed out to them.
They physically wanna see the house and they wanna actually get the vibe of the community and that's a physical visit.
Yes.
Yes.
You have to first get over the hurdle of getting them to like come here versus going to Powell Ridge or versus going to Bedford or versus.
Right. Right.
But then why do the brokers buy it?
The bottom, the bottom line.
My feeling is, and I'm reading with Ivy's point, that we are spending a lot of money, due pertaining effort.
I always want something, I always want something, it would make sense.
And that we need to like maybe wait for Ivy to get here, but maybe we need to take this topic up again.
Well, it's happening anyway, but.
It's not gonna happen tonight, but I, I do have concerns that a static book printed once to the ser, to the bed, I, to.
Have you, have you looked into the book, by the way? Have you ever looked, because a lot of the content hasn't changed.
I can see where really a lot of it hasn't changed.
Because I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is because a lot of the content has not changed over four years.
I can hear you, Rob.
This town has changed so drastically, that I think to our benefit.
I mean, that's why I'm asking if you looked.
I can hear you. And look, there's even this that says, welcome Whole Foods to Chappaqua, the date's a little wrong.
Right. Please, should we look at that? Big bad page.
Watch for future announcements of opportunities.
Yes, I'm watching, not waiting.
It's the same thing.
Listen, people are concerned, listen, we could talk about, it would be literally a five to seven thousand dollar investment for them. People concerned about home values, okay? This will help home values. Maybe not the experts sitting around this table, but the experts who actually sell homes say it helps home values. And quite honestly, those are the only experts I wanna hear from.
I am happy to use the content that we're developing for Discover Chappaqua and some of the existing content and paid for updating some of the existing content. But to underwrite the full print run and the full mailing?
Whoever, whoever said that, whoever said that though, whoever proposed that.
We didn't do that, we didn't do that. We, we paid to mail it to every resident.
This is underwriting, this is under, no, it didn't. This is under, this is underwritten.
No, 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 but. Can you put together a proposal of what it is that you have rather than this loose conversation?
So we can understand what we're getting from you.
Because what Grace did just say, the twenty-five hundred dollars per, um, realtor.
Did you, did you look in my email, which I'm sure you've read? First of all, we.
As I said, just said what our obligation, what the real estate agents do. Okay, uh, okay, I love being interrupted. I understand, I hear you. The twenty-five hundred dollars, as Grace just said, that each realtor underwrote was not just for the cost. It doesn't cost two dollars now, yeah, whatever that was, two hundred and fifty cents per one of these.
Fifty cents.
So it included their, their thousand dollar cost run, but there was definitely money in there that, that underwrote it as well.
Yeah, it was, it was some profit.
It wasn't just the town, no.
And as, and as I wrote in my email, we now have five brokers.
And there are more realtors.
And we can increase it to three thousand. And if you also look at it, there's advertisers in there. This was not funded by the town of Newcastle. This was funded by the real estate offices and the advertisers. And that's why they wanted to mail to every resident, because the advertisers wanted, wanted to mail to seventy-six houses.
Yeah, they look at here, look at here. Depending on when we get it done, we can add it in mailings that the town already sends out.
How long, if, if we said tonight and wanted to do it, how long, that's not the point. If we said today.
I'd like a proposal.
You have a proposal four years ago as well.
He just wants to know how long it would take. If we said, yes, tonight, how long would it take?[1663.84] He just wants to know how long it would take. If we said, yes, tonight, how long would it take?
If we, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we, if we.
Of course, we'd have a proposal.
Yes, how long does it take to turn that around?
Uh.
A final product to get out?
I hate to use.
Two months, a month, three months?
A four months, we're not holding you to a date.
Four months.
Okay, so a couple of months. So my my thought is not, and this is a little different from Hollis, I'm not saying I'm opposed to 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 this, because I do think it has value. I do also think, what I mentioned before, to someone more savvy and younger than me has value too. But when people move here, they're moving and looking in the spring, and they wanna be in here by August, because their kids are starting in school in September. So why are we, this should be a conversation that starts and gets in January or Feb- you know, January or February with the whole, that it's hitting, ready to go
Right, it's a May, a May market.
in May for, you know, April, when people start looking at houses.
Right.
April to 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 the to the summer.
Through June. Right.
So if we're gonna just put out a welcome guide, knowing full well that we're in a different community, at least pictures we can add and show in six, seven, eight months from now, why not then do this, and and sincerely, I'm not opposed to it, why not then do this for next, you know, next, next, a year from now?
Eight, May.
Because what's the, what's the bug up our proverbial tuchus? I think it's okay what we use.
Well, you know the bug.
To do it now.
You know why?
Because I I think it's more apt for later on, more valuable later on, it's because it's gonna hit the market at the right time.
Yeah.
And be able to allow us to show the things that we've done.
Which, when we're trying, what I suggested is to tie it into the Discover Chappaqua, which is going to be a website, and it's gonna be like a ribbon cutting.
But we still can't.
And everything else. And the point is, well, the Discover Chappaqua is coming this fall. And again, what we're trying to do is do as much as we can to help downtown because of the construction. So waiting a year is fine. And by the way, since.
But they'll see the downtown, we'll show pictures of our downtown.
Listen, and here's, here's, here's a little something, since you weren't involved four years ago.
New downtown, right? No, I wasn't.
This, this took a a lot of work by Grace, and I gotta tell you, by me too. This this stuff didn't happen automatically. You look at that book, that didn't happen automatically.
It was a lot of work.
I'm sure we have the foundation, we have the.
Now, I'm the one who worked on it four years ago, I'm the one who's proposing it now. If you guys wanna put it off for a year, have fun, good luck, I hope it gets done, believe me, there's a lot of stuff I hope to get, that I wanna get, see to get done. I hope that this town continues getting as much done for the next six years, as I know you find this funny, Hala, but here, here's the fact.
Oh my god.
Here's the fact.
It's not rude, I find that I am the only man that can do this, it's sound vaguely familiar.
Here, here's the fact, Hala. No, Hala, that's not what, that's not what I'm saying, Hala, and please, keep, keep your, keep your expert opinions to yourself, please.
You didn't say that, you're unbelievable.
And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, Hala, is that I worked on this.
That's unbelievable. I sense your passion, Rob.
What, what I, what I said, Hala, because you do a lot of also, believe me, and you, there's a lot to show you.
Guys, stop.
What I, what I said, what I, what I said, what I said is that I worked a lot on this four years ago.
Oh, I, I haven't. Oh my god, just stop.
I'm willing to work a lot on it now, and if I was gonna s-
And would you be willing to do it next year?
And I would say, no, I'm not gonna do it next year, because I'm not gonna be on the town board next year.
Okay.
What I'm saying is I'm offering my services to get it done again, like I did four years ago. If nobody wants to take me up on my offer, that's fine. I hope it gets done next year. I'm not saying it won't, because I think the people that are running for the town board are motivated and work. And that, by the way, is what I'm gonna be proposing for town board members, we need people who work. Because here's the situation, we have five town board members, and they don't all work.
Uh, it's where we're totally digressing.
So we need people who work on this town board. So I hope it gets done next year, but I'm not really sure if it will.
Oh, don't even get this started, Rob, don't, David, get.
Oh my gosh, but we're doing that.
So one other thing, let's just say something that's.
Yeah, that works digressive, this is getting, uh.
We're not digressive, because we can assume things are gonna get done.
I didn't have, I have such, I have been such a, oh my god.
Yes, we're so, I was interested in that.
I had, I had, I had.
As, as just, you know.
I'm in the middle of talking, no, I don't wanna hear this. It's gonna be a political rant, I don't wanna hear it, just stop.
I'm not. I'm not working, so.
Can I, can I make one other point?
No, I wanna finish what I'm saying, and then you can talk.
Oh, yeah, sure, yes.
I had me- meetings with some realtors today, actually. The spring market is very, very slow.
Mm-hmm.
It is a cross.
So, you know, I think that waiting a year doesn't uh matter. I think right now, we're getting young, you know, the people who are com- coming in are young, young families, they're not all necessarily in school at this point anyway. So my view is, let's update this and get it out as soon as we can. It's still gonna be relevant in the spring. And I know you're saying, we should take pictures of of everything that's, but there are pictures we can take now, of what the downtown's gonna look like anyway. And I just think this is gonna be relevant, but and I, no matter when, and I like, because if you look at it now, a lot of that is relevant even now, and that was four years ago, other than the picture of my son on the front, he's a little.
Yeah.
But um I do like your idea too of putting that online, so that you go on our website, and it's, you know, the Newcastle Welcome Guide, and then that can be updated.
It's ready, it's ready online. It's online. It's, it lives online and ready.
So tonight, tonight, you know.
They put it online, that's, that's, that's the point of Discover Chappaqua, right?
Right, well, yeah, but this, something like this is not just Discover Chappaqua, this should be on the town website as well, and we update it.
It lives, it lives online now.
But you talk, again, things to invite, and we're going, I know we're going in circles here, but things that make the town more inviting, with Toll Brothers, for example, maybe they wanna put something because of the housing. Maybe there's a new store or restaurant that wants to advertise.
Okay, so.
But the housing may or may not ever get done by Toll Brothers, like.
Just, just so you know, just so you know, from the, from the contract that we had four years ago, this guide cannot talk about Chappaqua Crossing, it cannot, this is, we are not promoting any specific store.
No, we're not, I think they may want to, that's what I did.
Yes, they may wanna put, they may wanna take out an ad, just like Whole Foods took out an ad in thing four years ago. They may wanna take out an ad, Lifetime Fitness would certainly wanna take out an ad, Whole Foods is certainly gonna wanna take out an ad, maybe Pet Value, maybe Chase, all the stores there. We'd have to wait for every single store to open to take out an ad, but we can't talk about how, and DeChicos may wanna take out an ad, but we can't have a page talking about how we have Lifetime Fitness and we have DeChicos and Whole Foods. We can't do that. And if you look at the contract from four years ago, it specifically says that. This is not, it, we are not promoting any specific business, we're promoting the town.
Right, welcome Chappaqua is.
We talk about a green community, we talk about the Performing Arts Center.
Would people be allowed to own the guide and sell advertisements to it? I mean, I, I have some questions about this, and I feel like a lot of it would be revolving, could you have an understanding about what, what, like what is the scope of work that we're talking about here?
Well, you got comfortable the last time.
And what's the interplay between this and Discover Chappaqua? And I, I, I read the email, but I, I don't understand what the scope of work that we're describing is yet, so.
I'm, I mean, discovered.
Can, can we look at that as an?
Discover Chappaqua to me was gonna be more merchants also kind of advertising what they're doing.
Yeah.
It was gonna be a little more marketing material than than this is, this is more informational.
Yeah, Discover Chappaqua is is basically showing off the stores, showing off what great places to eat, and I, to come here to eat, to play, to shop. That's what Discover Chappaqua is, is basically we wanna show people how great it is here in Chappaqua. This is different, this content can be used on the website, there's no question about it, we're gonna own the content. And quite honestly, paying somebody a few thousand dollars to to put together all this content is the freaking greatest bargain in the world.
Absolutely.
They would never do that for this kind of money, but for the fact that you're getting thousands of dollars from the brokers and thousands of dollars from the advertisers.
Right, and the whole scheme of things, I think that the cost reward, in the whole scheme of things, I think, I think Rob is right in the sense of that the potential value is enormous. Um, because it is showing off our town, um, both through private enterprises and just our municipality and and things that we have here. My hiccup is, is because it's taken us already four years roughly to do another one, the question is, is it worth waiting? You, and 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 this is no disrespect to you, even though you're taking this personally. It's not, because as much as all of us do whatever we're gonna do, this can be done. Is it just a better fit at a later time when we have more whistles and bells and more shiny new toys for Newcastle, Millwood, Chappaqua?
But if you look at, if you look at the content, again, if you look at.
But I, but I'm saying that we can, we can do it on.
But I, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take that, I actually think you're better off doing it now then, when people can say, wow, and you even have a picture, this is what we're gonna look like. Because the town looks so crappy right now, it would be great for someone to walk away with something and go, wow, look how everything they have to offer, and we know it's gonna look better.
That's a fair point, fair, very, right, very, very fair point.
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna have finished product, we're gonna have finished product at that point.
Fair point, touche.
Thank you.
But again, if you, if you look at the content, there's not, there's not that much content that has changed. I understand what you're saying, but the, 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 you, if you're talking about the content, if you're talking about fifty pages,
Yeah.
That's true.
you're talking about maybe one or two pages potentially changing with the stuff you're talking about. Most of this content is not changing. It's about the parks, it's about the school districts, it's about all our committees, which by the way, we're gonna have tons of committees.
We have like the memorial, they've already been there, we have a lot of great stuff there.
We didn't have, we didn't have the diversity committee, we didn't, we didn't have the diversity committee, we didn't have the every person's connected committee. I mean, these are things that are gonna sell our town, that's gonna make our town special. We didn't have the, we had only the book festival the first year.
I'm not, Rob, I'm, Rob, I'm not disagreeing.
You know, this year it's gonna be incredible, with all the merchants, it's gonna be decorating the windows.
Especially with the looking nice in the town, yeah, no, I, I don't disagree, Rob, I think it has.
I mean, if you look at the content, a lot of it has not really changed. I mean.
Potential. The questions are still the same questions, but I, I agree.
I'm gonna use a lot of the same pictures.
It's kind of a logistical point, uh, point I'd like to make is my own availability as a publisher, not that you're obliged to use me, you can use anybody, but I will venture to guess that most publishers like myself are very busy March, that's, that's high season for a typical publisher, consultant publisher per se.
What is it? Right.
Um downtime for first, in the suburbs is, for publishers is summertime.
Summer. That's right.
So that's why I'm available to produce this this summer. Otherwise, you come to me in March and tell me you want me in May, I'm, no, no thanks, I can't do it. So there's, that's something to to file.
That's a good point.
That's right.
Well, last, last time it shifted, it's August, I think.
And it's, it's not just me, it's, it's publishers, it's high season.
Right.
You know, you might be hard pressed, you know, it's not just for publishers, it's.
Pay more money probably too.
Possibly more money, um, summer's downtime for, in the, in the publishing world, you know, for everybody's gone. It's, it's like a good time to sort of gather material, it's a little bit slower, everybody's like a little bit more mellow.
The truth, the, the truth is also that it, it.
Yeah, so I have, you know, time to to help you out now. I may not have that time next year, I, even if I wanted to make the money, I might not have the time.
Right, even if we all agreed that it was, it was an incredible idea, we should one hundred percent do it.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point.
The fact is, if we can't get the brokers to sign on, I mean, they have asked me for more, they've asked you for more, and quite honestly, I'm very confident they will. But if we can't get the brokers to sign on, then it's a moot point.
Of course.
Because this was funded, and if the advertisers, if nobody's willing to advertise this, and people say, well, you know, if if nobody's willing to advertise on it, and nobody's, the brokers aren't willing to sign on, then it's a no-go. So the only way this is gonna work is if those people are still interested in it. They're the ones who are spending the money, and and you know, we're spending some money too, but we're gonna own all the content.
Right, so, so let's, I, I, let's put this, for lack of a better term, to rest now. It's on the table, I'm not saying no.
Well, I think what we should do.
Do you wanna contact the realtors and see?
I, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I think what we should do is put out feelers, to see if people are interested again. I know, I know people have asked me, and they've asked you, but quite honestly, those are the brokers, and they're not the ones who are cutting the checks, they're the ones who are making the commission when they sell the homes. We need the, we need the managers of the brokers, of the real estate offices to cut the check.
The agencies.
Right.
So we have to put out feelers to make sure they're still interested, and I think we should raise the price, and we do have five of them now. Actually have six, if you count um the one on King Street, um.
In the Lux.
Yeah, exactly. Do they advertise, do you guys?
They just started a little bit.
So good, so maybe we have six people. So, you know, we can pull out the feelers and see if they're interested.
I mean, that's, it's not a big investment for them.
No, it's not a big investment at all.
And, and you, if you were brokers, you can also.
I just wanna say again that I, I, I have, I have really liked the idea, I don't have a problem with it being a paper copy as opposed to only being online, as long as we're able to reuse the content that's been developed for Discover Chappaqua where it's appropriate. But I do really have some concerns, and Nick, I sent you an email just now about that. I have some concerns about the procurement mechanism, and about whether this is an appropriate use of of taxpayer dollars, whether the town should be doing this, or if it should be done through the chamber. So I, you know, I would, it would really help me to be able to say yes to this, if I could see what the scope of work is for this, and really understand what it is that we're, we're talking about from a contract based perspective.
Yeah, and I, I'll give you a separate call to have that discussion. I will tell you that we did look at this, and we initially struggled with it four years ago, but got to the comfort level, uh, for a variety of reasons I've discussed with you. One of them being that New York state law actually specifically authorizes a town, interestingly enough, not a village, but authorizes a town to spend public tax dollars to publicize the town. And that's why we then came up with the concept of limiting the advertising pages, so there was actually content in there. And this prohibition that Rob mentioned, that you couldn't have an editorial or content specifically targeting a particular vendor. We had, so your other question, I'll, I'll ask, I'll answer that with you separately.
We, we did have something where like eighty, seventy percent of something had to be town content, and thirty percent was.
Thank you.
It's like a seventy, yeah, seventy, thirty split of advertising in town.
I mean, I, I have said.
Advertising, I mean, there was, there was a, a split, and basically, and if it's seventy-five percent of that content, we, what we're paying for was a pretty incredible bargain.
Yes.
Yeah, and there's a lot in it.
You know. It was tons, I mean, again, if you look at it, most of the content is not changing.
No, it did agree with that, yeah.
And then the marketing portion of it is gonna be on uh Discover Chappaqua.
Wow.
We have a request, Nick would like his photo in there, sorry.
I missed the whole big town attorney page, that's a good.
Oh, you did miss the town attorney page.
All right, so when do we all put this back on?
Well, I, I'd like to reach out to the merchants first, I mean, not the merchants, the real estate offices, to see, to gauge interest, to see if they're interested.
Yeah.
Because again, if they're not interested, then it's, it's a moot point.
So why are we talking about our next work session?
Okay, so it's.
We're not gonna tell them that it's happening, we just wanna make sure that if it does happen, would you guys be willing to sign on for, for, to doing it again?
So.
Right.
I've still have some questions with procurement policy, but I don't think it hurts to just sign them on, and and there's ways, there's ways around it. I mean, quote, listen, this.
No ways around it, there's legal ways to pursue, it's pursuable.
So let's.
No, 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 because the, no, no, the truth, the truth is that the merch, the Chamber also used to do a guide, but their guide is directed towards, towards the merchants, and it was, and it had a different thing.
More like E to D.
Yeah.
So there, there were actually, the Chamber could be involved if we need them to be involved, but the fact.
But they could be in the same, in the same order, that we give to everybody, because.
Grace is not, we didn't have volume, but the one, the Chamber's. But the Chamber's involved, it could, to create more controversy.
I, uh, it's the impact.
So I would put it on for the next work session.
That's too late.
Personality was, we're done.
Right, so I'll bring it on to the seventh, and, okay.
An answer by then. We'll be part of, you know, just maintain a little bit like.
Get it for whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Grace, could I impose upon you for a proposal that, that I would be able to put as part of my agenda on for May seventh?
Sure. Yes.
Yeah.
So that would mean that I would need it from you by, let's say, um, the first, May first.
I would, no, no, I thought, I thought you just asked her about the, the.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I thought you just asked me about.
All right, terrific, thank you.
No, 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 I said, why not work with the Chamber, do it together, it's one big thing.
There we go.
Oh, oh, oh.
Thank you, Grace, so.
We're more than just.
Or not.
Oh, Chamber actually talked about doing it together, they sort of backed us.
Oh, so, well, I do see, you know, and I, can you just just.
All right, so, so what are we doing next?
I'm away this week.
Okay, next one is uh Newcastle United for Youth, this is, um, so i- if the board recalls, there are expenditures that Newcastle United for Youth makes out of their own money, that they need to go through our.
Yes.
How, our procedures.
Yes.
So this is a fifteen hundred dollar expenditure for a movie, If They Had Known, which is going to be um shown shortly, I think it's at the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. Um, and they're advertising it, again, coming out of their funds, we just approve it the way we do everything else.
Yeah.
Next is the uh snow remover for sidewalks and repairs. Um, as the board is aware, we are going, as soon as the state gives us a definitive answer on the sidewalk in front of uh Family Riches and the Historical Society, we're meeting with the state tomorrow, I'm hoping to have some really good news after that. Um, uh, we are gonna be going out for um a bid for snow removal services for next winter. Um, however, that's not gonna cover the entire town, and it doesn't address all of the sidewalks in town.
Right.
So, uh, we still have a um, a law on our books that enables snow to remain on sidewalks for twenty-four hours.
So move to eight, right, because I would propose.
Right, and so what we'd like to do is move it to eight. I think Grace made a very interesting point, snow removal, and the areas that aren't covered by what our downtown's going to be.
And eight hours doesn't include the hours between ten p.m. and five a.m.
It can, like.
What's, what does that mean then? So if it falls between those hours, then what?
If it's.
The eight hours starts at five.
At five.
Right, falls in midnight, we're not making them.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be all cleared by eight o'clock in the morning. Um, but one of the interesting things that um Ivy um uh pointed out is that in Quoton, um, they have a law that um allows the town to take and then clear the property. If, if it's not cleared within a certain period of time, decide work, clear it using their independent contractor.
And then charge them.
And then charge them.
Of course.
So we've talked about that already.
Yeah, and had.
Right, we have a mechanism. The interesting thing is, is that Quoton did it last year, and they're actually having a little trouble with it, they're having a little growing pains.
Yeah.
Meanwhile.
Because they're having a hard time getting the contractor to document what they've done. They have to take a picture of the property beforehand, they have to take a picture of it afterwards, they have to indicate how many hours they were there. And that paperwork, they've had a hard time getting from the contractor who's out clearing, so the thing, and they're allocating like.
Sure. So what's allocating toward which merchants and.
So, so then, so then could we, alternative way to handle that, if we're bidding it out, but it doesn't cover everything, is it possible that our own folks take care of those?
That, very, very possibly we'll have to do that, but um, I, I, it's an interesting idea.
You're totally right, you're the monitor.
And I'd like to just finding them as opposed to.
I'd like to just clear, I mean, they're, they're probably going to be an administrative fee along with it, so that, we, we don't want people to use this as their, you know, so, oh, I don't have to go and hire somebody.
Well, you can clear it, but find them. Yeah.
Right.
The town's gonna do it, we should be.
Well, it should be expensive.
Very expensive, if it is.
Yeah.
Could you give them, maybe in the bid, get the contractor to give you a per linear foot charge? And then, that way, then you can do your own invoicing based upon what per linear footage of that.
That. It would be for, for the additional work, not, okay.
Yes, for, for additional work, for any additional per property, what is the linear foot charge?
Well, doesn't it matter on depth of the snow, or in terms of?
Yeah, it probably will, yeah, based upon one inch to a.
Yeah, 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 right, yeah.
Maybe a cubic ton, yeah.
Well, I don't know if they're gonna keep tracking that, I think we're gonna have the same exact problem, they're gonna go, I, I did that area, and it was ten, ten linear feet, they're not, they're not gonna do that.
Yeah, that's a nightmare, that's a nightmare, you know, I, I think. I think code enforcement, I think code enforcement to go out and like, saying, you know what, you didn't do it, and we can have a linear foot of, of terms of not, the snow not, not removed.
That's what I think a big problem.
Mm-hmm.
That's, could be the fine, and that'll incentivize people.
Okay, as, as long as you're, as long as this is something you wanna pursue, let's sit down and we'll, we'll work out some, some old targets.
It'll be carried with the stick. Yes, it'll be first times a warning, and second times a fine.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, I think if we're removing it.
Right, Grace, thank you.
We need, they need to pay with cards.
Thanks, Grace, you're welcome.
Sorry, pardon the, okay, Grace, take this, slow.
Yeah, okay. Good night, Grace, thank you. Uh, okay, next is, um, okay, uh, authorization to retain an annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, this is for the onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance, this is for the skater system they have. Anybody have any issue with this? No? Okay, um, we'd like to uh ask for authorization to approve uh attendance at Highway School for the Highway Foreman and the Assistant Foreman, so it's uh, um,
Yeah.
uh Tom Costello and uh Charlie Bergstrom.
Yeah.
Uh, next is uh extension of the annual chemical award reading for liquid caustic soda, they're gonna hold the price for another year.
Yeah.
The next is authorization to approve an onsite audio testing, um, this is Partners in Safety that does all of our testing, um, under OSHA regulations, um, certain equipment that is used by our DPW and our Parks Department, if it reaches a certain decibel, we're required to do a baseline audio test, and then test people afterwards.
Okay.
Every year to make sure that there is no uh problem with their hearing. Uh, addition of hyperspots, Rob, what do we wanna do with this?
Well, we.
I'm so against this.
We don't look for them now that Mr. uh Salmons has stepped out.
Ah. Okay, so, we, we'll, we'll, okay.
Well, can we, I'm gonna step out too, can I run to the bathroom real quick?
Sure.
But we can't, we have a form anyways.
All right, so much.
No, right, right, we're taking a recess.
So we just take a recess, okay, I'll put this in.
We're taking a recess.
Yes.
I think you're recessed.
Stop pause.
Yes.
Right, I'll leave it there.
It's all in every way.
Okay.
Here we go.
Sorry, guys, I don't need to be rude, I'm not, I can't speak.
Okay. Um, okay, provision, um.
I'm not speaking.
Excuse me, audio, oh, hybrid spots, that's where we were.
Yeah.
I know, really good.
Oh, the hybrid spots, I mean, we talked, we did discuss this, we, you know, there's definitely a problem. At eight thirty, nine o'clock, they're running out. It just depend, I mean, listen, we need to decide what we wanna do. If we don't wanna increase the spots, that that's fine. I I I sincerely mean that. I I that I do think though we need to advise residents, at least the ones who are signing up for the past, so that we don't start getting emails from people that say, you know, I came at eight forty five and there's no spots. If we do increase the spots, that's fine too. I personally think, I know some disagree. But I I I think if we did a survey and asked people if if there's incentive to purchase a hybrid car, I think you'd find that it is.
Well, that's.
I think, I think people incorrectly have assumed in the past that some people are already getting hybrids and now they're getting the benefit of the spot. And that's from people I know, including myself, that's not the, that's not the uh, that's not the order of how it goes. People are specifically buying hybrids. Now, Kristen, you would also know this because, I mean, you do the hybrid passes or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you get a lot of people who are upset that the car is not on the list? Because my first hybrid that I I leased, I didn't take possession of it, but I signed the contract. This is before his town supervisors, like nine, eight years ago, something.
Uh-huh.
I called up, I said, I I'd like, how do I get my pass?
Yeah.
They're like, let me check the list. What kind of car do you have?
Yeah.
I told them it was like a Honda something.
I think, yeah, I think more people are aware of it now. We, and if they call and they ask, we tell them if we follow the um New York State Clean Pass.
New York State Clean Pass program.
So you should check that and be sure just because you have an efficient vehicle, it may not be on there.
But do you ever get people like me from five years, I I returned my car for like.
Don't, not anymore. I think a few years ago we did, but now people.
Yeah, people know, but it used to be, yeah, people were like, I have.
Yeah, it goes through the line. I feel like it's all Priuses and and um Teslas.
So.
It's mostly Priuses.
So my food.
Yeah, there's a couple of all of them.
My food for thought is, and this, these went back and forth, is that we're incentivizing people to to use their their uh, get get a hybrid to get the better parking.
Yep.
And that may in fact be a third car. I don't know if it's a third car or one of their two cars. So that that, and maybe Ivy also said it, so that your hybrid is sitting there parked, but your SUV is driving around town.
Your SUVs driving around.
Where, how is that green? That's not.
I I know, but I have to tell you that.
I, if I may just finish, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, listen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
So it seems to me that we don't wanna just tell people no. If we ever did phase out this, it would have to be phased out over time because it wouldn't be fair. Number one, number two, um, we can't consider increasing the number of spaces, but I think we have to say to ourselves and I believe we even sell our tickets or pardon me, we offer people spots in our parking lot. They're not guaranteed a spot. I'm not guaranteed a seat on the Metro North.
Right.
Not that I wanna compare that, but we can't guarantee everybody is gonna get the spot that they want.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
I agree.
But I I, if we are truly trying to be green, then it's not if you can afford and get a third car that's a Tesla, which I couldn't even afford, or maybe it's not your third car, um, you know, or something like that. Um, it should be, you should have that at home using that car and your big old conqueror should be the one that's parked and gets incentive. Just thinking out loud. I'm not saying that I should change that for something, but it's more of a green policy.
I agree, and I think coming at eight forty five or nine A M. and thinking there should be a spot waiting for you. There shouldn't. Other people should be able to use it at that point. If anyone's coming at nine o'clock, you should not anticipate there's gonna be space for you. You want the spot. You still have access to these good spots, but get there, you gotta get there early, just like anybody else.
But that's not. But that's, but first of all, there's a couple. You're, first of all, you're assuming people have three cars only use at the station. I.
Right, not bad. There are some.
And that's why I talk about the survey because we don't, you don't know. I personally use it at the station, but I have twelve thousand miles on it a year because that's what I get with my lease.
Right, right.
And I'm always very close with that. I never go over though. But I do put twelve thousand on it. So that's definitely not true. There there was, there was somebody who has a little smart car and that person may be a third car, I'll give you that one. But um, that's a new one. That's a new, that's a new car. I did a little smart one. He's teeny, you haven't seen it, it's two seater.
It's tiny.
It looks like a golf cart.
Right, right, exactly. It's awesome looking.
Yeah.
But um, what's it called? Um, listen, the way it works with train station, you don't take the train, but the tr- the way it works is that you got, you got, well, you're not like a standard commuter.
No.
You got the finance guys and and gals.
Yeah.
And then you got the lawyers.
Yeah, and the lawyers part.
And we're, you're discriminating against the lawyers.
Yeah, we're, let's forget something back.
You're discriminating against the lawyers. When you see somebody coming and they're good, they'll get a spot. Those are the lawyers.
I know, I know.
Oh, poor lawyers.
Because some of them are working till like ten, eleven o'clock at night and then they wake, they, you know, they get in later in the morning.
Well, but you, but you also have a lot of second parents who go in at eight thirty and the.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
So the first parent may go in, you know, at five thirty, as I used to, as I was a newbie. And then the second parent goes in at eight thirty. Let me take this one up.
Right.
So, yeah, but I, listen, my my opinion, I've sent it over email. My opinion is that we should allow the SAB to continue with the research and recommendations that they've already started working on. And in the meantime, I'll please on extending three additional spots to people who choose to.
Yeah, I I I think that's fair, but.
I just think I've had so many people approach me saying, how are you guys even considering increasing the number of spots? Enough already. We have like rows and rows for cars for people with hybrids and we're actually then dictating to people saying, if you don't have this car, you're gonna have a bad spot and too bad.
Yeah, but that, but that's, it's worked. I mean, people, that's exactly the incentive that we.
Yeah, but there are a lot of people who don't wanna get another car.
But who says another car? It's a second car. By the way, let me just say this last thing, with the the point about using the, having the hybrids sit in the lot all day. The SAB is very aware of that and they're actually looking into initiative where.
Right.
They actually give, uh, as long as you have a hybrid in the in the family, because it makes sense to have the hybrid on the road all day. My wife certainly puts on more than twelve thousand miles uh a year and and our kids are older now, but you know, when they were younger, forget it. But the point is that um, if we, if they proceed with that policy, we definitely have to re- get the number of spots.
So you're saying Cindy's gonna drive your Prius around while you park the SUV at the train station?
You know. No, no, Cindy, no, Cindy, no, Cindy, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. Cindy's gonna have, no, Cindy's gonna have, Cindy's gonna have a Toyota, um, what is it? The, uh, they have SUV hybrids.
No way.
She's gonna have a hybrid, SUV, a Highlander, right. She would have that.
I don't know.
Does that qualify as Highlander?
Was it?
Does a Highlander qualify?
I I don't remember.
Some of them, not all of them.
And she would have that. Honestly, in a perfect world, she would have a hy- a Toyota, um, the Highlander hybrid and I'd have a Jeep.
Highlander.
But I, respect the law, but.
It's gonna be perfect and I'd be parking in my good spot and it's perfect.
I don't, I don't know the way, but I'm asked what a perfect world would, what if she would have a Toyota Highlander?
Yeah.
No, no, I'd be very happy with the Jeep, but I want a spot.
I'm so not in favor of that.
It sounds like we're all in agreement about allowing the SAB to keep doing their research and make recommendations, but I think the only question in front of us right now is whether we wanna extend the number of spots in the meantime until they complete the plan.
A Jeep. Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we we should, I think, extend it by a couple of spots like you recommended, but I also think we need to.
I say no.
We need to talk to the SAB because the fact is, if 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 there's not, they need to talk to us soon because if there's not, if there's not a willingness to maybe double the spots, if they, if they go forward with their proposal that any hybrid in the house gets you a better spot. And if there's no willingness on the town board to entertain that kind of proposal, we should tell them that right away because they're wasting their time. That's gonna double the amount of uh of hybrid spots.
There's no way I would be in favor of doubling the amount of spots, no way.
Yeah, I wouldn't be really, no.
But the point is that any.
Yeah, I I I would be. I I I'm interested in hearing the proposal. I, you know.
I I, it it, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be if 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 they're using at home the the chugger of gas that's getting fourteen miles per gallon in their SUV that's a hybrid or electric or whatever it may be, a smaller car sitting and not being used, that defeats the purpose. It's, it's almost silly.
But then another point is that, that you're, the point is you want the hybrid to be the one on the road all day and that's what we're trying to encourage.
Right, that's what I'm, what I'm saying.
Right.
That's it.
So then you're gonna have, you're gonna have weeds parks and all the Clean Pass spots, like.
That's what SAB is looking to.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
Okay, and that was the issue that SAB had when we started this program like ten years ago.
Right, right, that's.
Yeah, I agree with it. I understated.
They thought that the optics, yeah, the optics of having
The optics are horrible.
all of these gas guzzlers and hummers sitting in Clean Pass spots, the SAB could not wrap their head around it.
Yeah. And how are we gonna release that?
Yeah, nineteen ninety nine wanted their their Hummer back. I mean, does everyone get a Hummer?
Because you'd have sticker, you get a, you get a sticker no matter what part.
That says my other car is a hybrid and, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You get, you get a sticker. Listen, we don't have to support their policy. I'm telling you, they're actively looking at it.
It's like, I did it, I did it, so it's up to them.
They're having a meeting in this room tomorrow night and that's gonna be one of things on their agenda. They've been actually, they've been looking at that because it makes sense. I'm not saying we wanna do it, but the theory makes sense because the fact is it doesn't make sense to have a hybrid sitting in the train station all day, even if I put twelve thousand miles on it a year, while my other car is the one on the road all day, you know, being used.
Yes, correct. I agree.
Alright, so what are we doing? We doing three?
I think status quo for now is fine for me.
That's what I think.
So you're not waiting any spots?
Let's wait till we hear what they say. I just.
Alright.
For another two weeks to two, four weeks.
We're holding it. Get there at nine o'clock, you shouldn't be expecting a spot.
Okay, next.
Sorry.
I I don't think, well, uh.
No.
No, I, Ivy and I would be willing to.
There are people who don't even get spots in the entire parking lot.
Yes, they do. We haven't had that.
I, I didn't have a vote here, sorry.
We haven't, we haven't had that problem in a while.
I think holding off on two to four weeks to talk to the SAB is abso.
We do get it. Well, we were talking about three or four spots in the meantime. Listen, something else we considered doing, where this requires, this requires a public hearing and it's a little bit of a pain is, is the truth is, is that a lot of times you get there at nine o'clock or eight forty five and there are no more hybrid spots. And John, you know this, you drive a hybrid too. But those electric spots are still available. And be those don't get used that much. You only after nine thirty.
You can park it.
Why would we change that to make those electric spots more available soon?
So what you could do is you could make the, right, we could change it, but that's gonna require a public hearing legislation now, so that's not.
Yeah. Fine, fine, really?
It's in, it's in the code. It's in the code, right.
Between five thirty and nine or whatever.
But that, that one, we could actually make that up until eight thirty.
Yeah. Nine thirty.
And you could say, well, if you drive a electric car, you need to get to eight thirty. At least that would be three more spots that are available to a hybrid rather than waiting till nine thirty.
Yeah.
And the electric car at train stations.
Because frankly, a lot of people are not plugging in at the train station anyway. They're charging at home. They gotta pay for it here.
Yeah, I also.
No, it's, it's, it's also expensive, right. It's expensive at the train station.
Right.
And the fact is, it doesn't even work out at the times because the train's at nine twenty three and you can't park there till nine thirty. So now somebody strolls in at nine forty and they get a perfect spot right up front.
Alright, so let's move on to the next.
We could definitely try that, okay.
So we would have to set a public hearing. Ivy, you think that, how about that? We change the time on the electric spots. Anybody could park there, let's say, after eight thirty or.
Any hybrid could park.
Any hybrid could park there after eight thirty.
And then in a non after nine thirty.
Well, everything is after nine thirty, right, right.
Right, right.
Hello?
Oh, you asked me when I thought.
Yeah.
I, yeah, no, I I I don't know. I was trying to, I was trying to get get two, three spots immediately to be able to be responsive to the feedback that we've gotten so far. You know, this doesn't sound like this, this is an immediate thing. It sounds like, you know, there's public hearing, there's all of that, so, you know.
So, but the.
I don't know.
In that, in that case, I'm not sure there's providence to do that. Why don't we just wait for the SAB report of that? So that's what.
I mean.
Cause I feel like we're hearing from a couple of people who are pissed they can't get a spot and not from the many, many other people who complain to me all the time, like, are you kidding me?
Right.
We have way too many spots already.
Well, the fact is, it, the spots have probably not been running out as much recently because we, once the spots really start running out on a daily basis, we will start getting emails. And so far, we've only really gotten two emails, one from me and one from the other guy.
Right.
When, when they, when they, when they.
Use Robert Greenstein.
I use.
Who's Robert Greenstein?
Gobert Greenstein. I tried to disguise my name. But um.
Pobby.
But uh, the re- we will start getting complaints if they start running out on a, on a consistent basis.
Okay. Alright, so moving forward to the next issue?
Right, we haven't gotten enough, so I think warrant to change.
Okay. Uh, Bubble Truck, authorization to approve the special permit request?
Yeah, I think we have to do that. We can do that now because it's on the agenda.
Yes.
We'll just do it when we get to it.
I would like that in the house.
No, I know, I just saw that it has to be. It's on the agenda.
Right, so we'll do it when we, we approve this.
Um, we're gonna be asking also for authorization to hire a contractor to install the gas service at the community center.
Right, right, right. But make sure it's on the.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to move on this. We only have a small window.
And we can't, we're not supposed to do that in-house or?
No, 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 we have to get plumber to do that. Yeah, it's a, yeah, we even have to hire a.
Certified contractor.
What are, what are the costs to to install gas?
No, the contractor has a certified former's.
Compared to.
Oh.
If he comes here, he does this thing for us.
Another Chappaqua boss.
I mean, what's, what's.
No, you can get a lot of plumbers install gas.
Oh, I don't, I mean, that, the, the um thermal, the geothermal?
Why plumbers still get funds?
Well, they may have, well, they may have the certification. A lot of them get certifications, they wanna do it.
With incentives in.
Right.
It would be twenty thousand dollars.
Give it a con it.
Maybe.
But they, out of their certified.
What's the savings in terms of gas usage in a couple of years?
I don't know, I know, but I mean, if there's any contractor who's.
So the question is this, so the question is this.
For doing now, why not look into the issue?
As long as it's certificated.
If it turns out that this, that this end, that this ends up not being our community center,
Both of us and councilman, Slaney, administrator.
we end up being able to sell the building as a nice restaurant because it's a charming building, we have gas service for a restaurant.
Right, so we have to hit up, otherwise we're we're out of lock, that's what we do.
It's a good idea. It's a great idea to do it.
We don't have to hit it up.
Alright, I was just saying, why not convert it to the G O, whatever it may be, if we're gonna.
So that, that.
It's so expensive.
That's what.
We can still do that down the road too, but at least we uh.
And it's so new and you have to dig up, it's, it's.
You really do want that, the gas though? No, 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 we, we thought about it.
To me, you're you're using so many fossil fuels also to dig into the ground deep enough to use geothermal energy. I, and it's, it's kind of prohibitive right now.
I think it makes sense with a new house, you know, but some of these existing houses.
Yeah, so.
And we have all these subject fields too, it uses.
Yeah.
It's a real problem here. We don't have too much law, your, most people don't have too much yard to work with.
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright.
Good time. Alright, um, okay, um, we're, we'd like to set a public hearing for the landmark designation. That'll be on for next time.
Next.
Yeah, yay.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, that's.
Um, a coach bonds contract for the teen trips and senior trips, teen campus on senior trips.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd like to award the R P for emergency egress windows. Um, so when we did our active shooter training in the building, one of the things that we did was a security assessment here on the building. And um, the way it's set up is we need um escape windows, limited upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, we do. If there was a fire too, we can, we jump out.
That's true, yeah. And if there's a fire, yeah. So that's what we need. So we're, we're getting that done. Alright, uh, let's go through the administrative items. Uh, payment of claims, adoption of minutes. Yay, Christina. Where's the Lauren, who is, whoever it is, yay you. Moving along with some minutes. Um, and a banner request for the Rotary Breakfast, um.
I don't know about the Rotary Breakfast.
Oh, I don't know. That's a tough one.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Can you get Rotary lunch? I mean, whatever you need.
It's dessert night.
Um, okay, and let's go through the um, the resolutions, Christine, will you have them here?
Yes, they should be there somewhere.
I move to approve the payment of claims in the matter of four hundred twenty five thousand, four hundred nine dollars, twenty cents. Listen to the summary free check writing report and detailed voucher detail report. Be prepared April twenty third of this glorious year. Checks will be issued on each claimant, listen, I like, does it call this there? On Wednesday, April twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Um, move to adopt the following minute to the town board, uh, work session from January second, town, as reflected below.
Aye.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, I move to approve the request from the Rotary Club for a banner for Rotary Breakfast, which can be displayed from April twenty ninth to May fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the hiring Miguel Pagan, position of part-time recreation attendant in Recreation and Parks Department at a rate of twenty dollars per hour. For softball, seventeen per hour, for special bench with a start date of April twenty third of this year.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to authorize the hiring of Stephen Coleman, to the position of part-time environmental coordinator in the Development Department at a rate of a hundred twenty five dollars per app, per
Mm-hmm.
hour for two days a week with a start date of April twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen. Did you say, by the way, is it a minimum of seven hours or, or did you not say that, or something about seven hours?
No, no, I was, it, we were talking about days a week, you know, seven, I, it doesn't have to be, he said two days a week. Uh, as far as part-timer goes, it's uh.
Well, it's the hour, I guess it's the hour, it doesn't make a difference whether it's four hours or, okay.
Right. Right.
Um.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye. I move to award zoning R P to Kimberly Horn, Tori Gallus and Partners, R C, R E S Group, Joe Russell, Squire for the Chappaqua Hammond, Formed as Code, for a total cost of three hundred ninety nine thousand, nine hundred eighty four dollars for the twelve to fifteen month timeframe.
Subject to.
Julie, review and advise the council to approve the forming substance.
As just stated.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize Boswell Engineering to continue construction management services from April twenty second, twenty nineteen through November first, twenty nineteen at an amount not to exceed, like, two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to approve the change order for three additional tree, oh, no, we're gonna wait though and see if we can get this out of that.
We're going.
No, but we're still gonna approve it. Um, oh, well, no, we will.
No, if the tree fund.
We can do a tree fund. We don't need it out of this.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Exactly, we'll hold off on that till you know.
That's a.
Dude, this is my fucking good.
That's great.
Um, I move to approve the change order for the North Greeley Drainage redesign for an amount of not to exceed seventy eight thousand, seventy hundred sixty seven dollars, point six cents.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to approve a letter of offer in the amount of sixty three thousand, six hundred dollars to Millwood Center LLC with regard to the property necessary for acquisition for the Millwood Sidewalk Improvement Project at two hundred thirty Sawmill River Road location.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the price proposal from Mike Collins of Collins Plumbing Corp. to install a gas service line from Center Street to the boiler room located at the rear of the community center, ten Center Street, for the amount of five thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize setting a public hearing for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty nineteen at seven P M. concerning the following landmark designation. Young Valley Bates House at nine Barnes Road in Osneal and Rockdale at twenty eight Barnes Road in Osneal.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 And I move uh to accept the price proposal of Hudson Valley Charter Services for Coach Bus Services for twenty nineteen for the cost per bus as listed in the resolution.
Second.
Call in favor?
Do you wanna call for the Bubble Truck tonight?
Right, aye.
Yes.
You wanna do the Bubble Truck tonight? Okay, there's not one prepared, but if you want to approve the Bubble Truck tonight.
I wanna approve, I move to approve.
It's a four specific date and time and.
The exception to the public consumption law for the, uh, put the address and the date of the event.
And the date of the event, wait a second.
Okay. Eight forty one.
It's for next week, isn't it? Yeah. So.
Is this for the tariff thing?
Yeah. It's for, it's eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Here, uh, Saturday, ten to six, let's see, I don't know, that's about.
No, it's story hours.
Yeah, so, it's a long strike. Mother's Day event.
I just move to authorize.
Saturday, May eleventh.
Okay, so move.
Can we just do that?
You do that?
Yeah, 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 yes.
Saturday, May eleventh.
Second, we're good, second.
Call in favor?
That's the most tentative one ever.
Are we done?
Can't get.
Are we done?
Um, you don't wanna stay a little longer?
Well, I'm gonna tell you something. This is the moment I've been waiting for for a long time. I'm not gonna move to adjourn. I'm not gonna join in the application. You're saying you're council, you're under tenure. You can't go anywhere. No hourly for you.
Yes, but I think say goodnight and just like.
Hey. I move to adjourn the meeting. Rob, can I get a second?
Second. Call in favor?
You can second? No, man! I didn't know you could second.
Aye.